I serve as Chair of Community Board Nine. Oh, thank you for recording this. Yes, so we are calling meeting to order at 7:01. Fred Baptiste, Chair of Community Board Nine, would like to welcome everyone who's joined us for our public hearing. This is actually a format change that we've implemented this year with respect to the board is mandated to hold monthly hearings. So we are going to be in the process of having hearings starting from 7:00 PM going to 7:30 PM on a monthly basis. It will occur immediately before the general board meeting. After which we will go, at the conclusion of the hearing, we are going to go directly into the general board meeting. At the hearing notices, you'll be provided information for the link. You will also be given opportunity to pre-register so we can get you on the speaker's list. And you will be afforded, I believe it's two minutes per speaker to provide testimony on the topic for the month. For this month, we have scheduled, we will be accepting testimony on the Citizens Budget Commission report on improving New York City's land use decision-making process. I do see a representative from La Cucusa was here as well. They will be appearing this evening for a new wine beer and cider license. And I, do we have a representative here from Bluenuck?
We have Mr. Boyce is here from Bluenuck.
Okay, all right then. All right, so since we do have representatives, we will be able to take the testimony with respect to those two applications as well. All right, so at this time, I would ask the district manager or the district office team, do we have members who have raised their hand and identified that they wish to give commentary?
Can you go over the instruction again? Right now, we have no hands raised.
Absolutely. So for all those attendees who wish to speak as part of, to provide testimony this evening, please use the raise hand function on Zoom. So if you were on the Zoom application, if you go to reactions, you should be able to see a button that says raise hand and that will be able to identify you. If you are on by phone, please use star nine. The star nine function on phone will raise your hand, at which point the district office team will be able to identify you and will be able to promote you to panelists. Once you've been promoted, you will hear a prompt saying to unmute. You will hit star six at that time and that'll allow you to speak.
Okay, we have a couple of hands raised. We have Tim Marie. And then Christine. Also, the representative from La Cucusa. We have Liz York. Liz.
Okay, all right, so let's begin with that. Could you please promote P. Marie, is it P. Marie Harrigan, please? Okay, Ms. Harrigan?
Hi, good evening, everyone. This is Sid Braha from the Department of Sanitation to make an announcement about leaf collection. I'm logged in using my wife's computer, which is why the name shows up as such.
Understood. Well, actually, we're accepting testimony for a couple of things as part of a public hearing. Can you defer for about a half an hour and you can come back?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you very much. Okay. All right, Dante, could you please promote Christine Watler?
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. This is my first time participating. So are my comments at this time related to the pizzeria's appliance application for the liquor license? Or is it on a broader scale?
No, you may test on that if you wish.
Okay, for me, as a resident of the community and also someone who owns a car, I have found sort of getting around both this community board and a lot of the city really difficult with the outdoor dining sheds that have been in place and left in place in some cases, even if the business is out of business. And I wanted to know if, in addition to the liquor license, if they are applying for an outdoor shed because that I would be against. That's my question.
Thank you. Fred, if helpful, I can speak to the status of the current application and then we can hear from the applicant themselves later.
Wonderful, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Christine, Ms. Watler, for coming. My name is Primo Lassana. I'm the Chair of the Public Safety Committee. What I can tell you is that at this point, there is not an application for an outdoor dining area. And we have not heard of one that intends to be applied for. And La Cucusa will speak on their own behalf shortly when we reach them in the list.
Wonderful, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, could you please promote at this time Liz York? And then we'll come to La Cucusa, I think you could raise your hand. We'll figure that out.
Okay. I'm speaking about the change of the proposed changes of the land use decision making process.
Okay, absolutely, you have a floor, two minutes.
The environmental review process doesn't stop any project. It's really important that we have the ability to comment on any proposed development. It allows the community to know of any environmental consequences. I oppose any changes to the land use decision-making process.
All right, thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, um, go to panelists. Okay, La Cucusa, so you do have your hand raised, so go ahead, you can testify.
Hi, good evening. My name is Sal Randazzo, one of the owners of John Sal's Pizzeria, were the ones filing for the beer and wine license.
Welcome, sir. Is there any testimony you wish to provide this evening?
Um, I was expecting my expedite to be here, but I don't know exactly what the process was. But I know we submitted all the documentation that was necessary, that was requested to complete the process. So I think this was the final meeting, so I don't know any of the details, to be honest, with the processes.
That's correct, yeah. So we have all of your paperwork in and have reviewed it. I think this is just an opportunity for you to potentially speak a little bit about your business and, you know, kind of the intention behind the license that you're applying for. It's just for the general public and then later in the meeting, you'll be speaking to the community board itself, but this is kind of you to speak to the public audience.
Okay, great. Yeah, so the pizzerias, we've been running, I mean, the pizzeria, whoever knows, it's been there for a long time. My partner Joe and I have been running it now for six years. And, you know, we're looking to just fix up the place, add a little more seating. And I know some people said liquor license, it's just beer and wine. We're not doing full liquor at all, not like a bar. It's just to offer some beers, some wines, in addition to while people eat pizza, pretty much it. We're going to do a small renovation this winter. That'll be adding probably another, maybe 10 to 12 seats inside the restaurant. Because as whoever knows, whoever's come to the pizzeria, we only have six seats right now. So basically, a little expansion and offering a little more variety to the customers.
And then I don't know if you wanted to speak to Ms. Watler's question at all around the intent to expand onto the side.
Right now, because since we want to focus on the inside dining, we have no intention. We had it up. I kind of agree. I wasn't a big fan of the sheds, especially if they're not built right and there wasn't a good design and process. But as of right now, there's no intention of sitting out, doing outdoor seating. Our intention for this winter is to expand inside and make a nice little dining room inside.
Thanks very much, Sal. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, Dante, who we have next on the speaker's list?
Ah, I see Ansel Boyce, Representative from Bluenuck.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, so Mr. Boyce, go ahead. You have the floor. Please tell us a little bit about your business.
You're on mute currently. You just have to unmute yourself. There you go. Somehow, we still can't hear you. I saw you mute off, but we still cannot hear you. Maybe headphones plugged into your computer or something, not sure. Why don't we, should we circle back around?
Absolutely. So we'll come back to you, Mr. Dante. We'll come right back. Okay, so who we have next?
Okay, I see Teresa Westerdahl.
Okay, this is Westerdahl, you have the floor. Two minutes.
Hi, I was under the impression that this part of the meeting would be a hearing about the 13 points to change the rezoning process in New York.
Correct. So we are taking testimony at this time. So if there's anyone who wishes to provide information or if there are issues that they would like to bring to the board's attention at this time, this is the opportunity to do that.
All right, so I want to talk about the point of Mayor Eric Adams' commission made a recommendation regarding changes to both the law and city and state administrative policies regarding rezoning applications for development. The community boards have been designed to address land use issues and these... I'm sorry, I'm getting an echo because I'm trying to use my camera and my phone at the same time. So it's causing me a little issue.
Okay, the echo is not that bad on our side, so if you want to keep going, you can.
Can I just have one second?
All right, this is...
Just let somebody else go and I'll come back. I just have to fix this.
We'll do that.
Thanks.
Okay, Dante, who do we have?
Dante, you're muted.
I know several people were having trouble getting to the meeting as well. The link on the website wasn't working, so I was sending the mother links. So I should see, Alicia.
Westerdahl, you can direct them to email BK09-1. I'm monitoring the box now if they need assistance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dante, who do we have next for commentary?
Celeste Chase.
Good evening and thanks, Chair and Dante. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the liquor license applications. And so it seems as if the applications have often been a rubber stamp. I guess if there's no issue and they pass whatever requirements that the city has or the police department and the like, that we typically approve them. And so I want us to, as a board, to consider what benefit the community gets from actually agreeing to the liquor licenses. And so I've always wondered, because there is, oftentimes, there's some nuisance that goes along with it. I'm not saying in every case, but it seems that we should be thinking not just the technical requirements of meeting the requirements for a liquor license, but also what benefit the community will get through a liquor license. And I don't know if that means supporting local kids programs or things of that nature. And I'm not saying we can hold anyone hostage. But what I am saying is that if these businesses want to be a member of the community and want the support of the community, then they should also support the community through more than just, you know, wanting to business and getting profits and asking for our blessings for a liquor license. So I would really like us to consider that as we, as a board, look and review liquor license applications.
Thank you very much. Dante, who we have next?
Next, we have in the attendees, LaShawn.
Okay, please promote LaShawn. On there? Do you want to go on the line?
Hello?
Yes.
Okay, goodness gracious. I'm confused as to what's going on because we have like, I hear the restaurant. I haven't attended a meeting in so long. The liquor license and then someone made a comment about ULEP. Is this everything happening at the same time?
We are taking testimony right now on the CBC report. We are also taking testimony with regards to two FLE applications that are before the board to be, so taking other testimony.
Okay, all right. So I'm sorry. I haven't used this platform in a long time with so many people. So I just wanted to give testimony on the changes, the upcoming proposal, the changes in the ULEP process. So let's see here, just have a little piece. So we're talking about, yes, honey, oh my goodness. You know what? You might, can you come back to me? Is that okay?
We'll try, but the only issue is, you know, we have a limited time. We're going to be concluding by about 7:30.
Sure, sure. Okay, if you could put me in at the end, that'd be awesome. I just have to tend to this little guy.
Okay, we'll try.
Thank you.
Here, little guy. Okay, Dante, we have next on the queue.
All right, we have a phone number, 718-634-4989.
Okay, please promote to the panel so they can provide testimony.
It should be... Able to speak.
Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you.
Okay, this is Julia Bryant, and I'd like to give testimony regarding the changes we proposed to the rezoning. There's been a number of proposals to the rezoning process. One such proposal is that the state should reduce the number of environmental impact categories. Their rationale is this would help by reducing the time spent studying environmental impacts that the project would never create, thus saving both time and money on rezoning projects. Our response is this makes no sense because the EAF actually does this by allowing developers to eliminate any number of environmental impacts that would be subject to review, only look at, and only look at the ones that may cause harm. Reducing the state's categories also reduces the city's requirements. This is important because the courts tend to address only the state's legally defined environmental categories and none that are not part of that list. Reducing this list would result in disclosure of negative environmental impact, allowing more negative environmental impacts to occur due to development. For example... Am I still there?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. For example, the state doesn't, okay. Okay, the state does not list luxury development in poor communities as a category. And yet, there are serious negative consequences that the state suggests should be considered as it produces displacement. However, the courts do not demand that. The developers or the city take a hard look at these consequences because they are not part of the state's list of categories. Thus, reducing the list would reduce the review and exposure of negative environmental impacts on the community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Bryant. Okay, Dante, we have, okay, this is a reminder for all those who are present. We have about 10 minutes left in the hearing. So please, I would ask for everyone to make sure that you're ready, as soon as you're promoted, to be ready to speak. And also to make sure that we keep our comments concise as possible so we can get as much testimony as we can from all the people who've joined us this evening. Who's next, Dante?
All right, let's run it back to Ansel Boyce.
Sure, Mr. Boyce?
Good evening, everyone. I'm representing a Bluenuck restaurant and cocktail bar. We are right there on North Stranavale. What we're going to be doing is basically serve a fusion of Caribbean and American meals on the high-end scale. We are going to be a full cocktail bar as well. And as the young lady says, in the past few minutes ago, we do plan to buy most of our raw materials from our local farms. In that sense, we will be giving back to the community a little bit more than usual. We did went through this process, but we would have a little demise thanks to COVID-19. So we have to redo this process and basically looking forward to seeing a lot of good things coming to Brooklyn, good things coming to New York, thanks to Bluenuck Restaurant and Cocktail Bar. It's going to be a sight to see, put it this way. It's going to be very beautiful. It's going to be tin tables, not too big. We are going to be having outdoor seating, but not on the street. We are already slotted for just sidewalk, which is on our property. So we, there's no need to be in the street. There will be no buildings, no huts or anything of that sort. That's it.
Thank you very much. All right, Dante, who we have next?
All right, we're going to try Teresa Westerdahl again.
Okay. Westerdahl?
Well, there's a... Can you hear me? I'm also signed in as Teresa Westerdahl. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, all right. Let me just roll through this because I know time is short. Okay, I want to talk about council deference. This has to do with the mayor's plan to change the ULEP. The city council has always voted in line with the local council person on ULEP matters. It's what they call council deference. So because the council's vote is binding and no vote will end a project. So a council person has a lot of power in the ULEP and their constituents assert their power by pressuring the council people. But the mayor, who would be king, there wants to eliminate council deference. By eliminating deference, he removes the council person's power. The members are currently answerable to their constituents, but now they would only be answerable to the people who fund their campaigns if we think we know who they are. The mayor's proposed plan would force this council to need a supermajority to overrule the city planning commission's recommendations. This is Mitch McConnell territory. And should the council effectively unite to disapprove a project by reaching a supermajority, the matter would immediately, the mayor says, be turned over to a new alternative group of deciders, four people, the mayor, the public advocate, the borough president, and the council speaker. So he must be pretty confident that this group will do as he says. Do we want a city council and council people whose opinion is just advisory, the same as a community board or a borough president? Do the council members want that? These actions, as I see them, would do nothing other than consolidate the already outrageous power of the New York real estate industry. And I would like to ask, who is the Citizens Budget Commission that created these recommendations? This organization's been in business since 1932. And yet, I don't know anybody who's ever heard of them. And I would suggest that that's because they don't represent our interests. Thank you.
Okay, I can go now. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you, Ms. Bryant.
Okay, I would like this, can you hear me? Can I go?
Uh, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, I would like this session to be extended because we've spent quite a bit of time on things that weren't related to this session. But just to say what I need to say, the... This proposal is going to remove the community board from the ULEP process. And that's one of the reasons I joined to be a community board member, is to be part of that process. And Mayor Eric Adams' blast program is going to completely remove us and the borough president from that, from this process. So I think we should all examine this closely and talk about it more rather than liquor licenses during this timeframe. So I'd like somebody else to go. Thank you.
Dante, who else we have in queue?
All right, so I do see Alicia, the attendees. I believe that, yeah, that's the only person who hasn't already went.
As in Alicia Goodrich?
Uh, this name, no, no, not you.
I was just checking.
Okay.
Dante, is it Christine Walter also?
Yeah, but I want to jump to Alicia first because I know that this person hasn't spoke yet. Okay, I promoted her.
First, I think this hearing is not being conducted properly. A hearing has a subject matter. You should not be combining two subject matters in a hearing because it confuses everyone and nobody knows what they're talking about in relationship to what subject matter. If you're going to have a hearing, the hearing should be on one topic and that's the normal way in which it's conducted. This way, you're trying to put in two topics and everybody's now crisscrossing. Second, it prevents the community from being able to talk about the both of the topics because I can now only talk one time and I cannot talk about one or the other. So I think that this needs to be rethought about how you're conducting these hearings. Secondly, I'm calling because I am very concerned about the proposals that are coming out of CBC. Some people have already talked about it. I think that this community board needs to really consider not just having this hearing and obviously, from the way it's being presented, it doesn't even seem to be a thoughtful hearing or anything that seems to be being taken seriously. But the fact that the mayor is proposing a large amount of changes to the rezoning process, including the elimination of the community board, not being able to file lawsuits against developers or the city, removing the power of the city council and putting all of the hands, all the power in the hands of one person, which is the mayor. That, we need to understand that the only reason why the ULEP process actually exists is because the community wanted to have a voice in that decision-making process. And it was because of the amount of resistance that the community did in the late 1960s and the 1970s that you now are sitting here with a community board that has a district manager that has funding because people said they wanted to have a say. Now, the ULEP process is not a very good process as far as I'm concerned, as far as being able to start projects. But the community at least has a voice to be able to oppose a project and be able to use their pulpit in trying to get changes to the law or the way in which the city looks at projects. If you remove your voice from that process, then there will be no reason for us to exist in the committee, in the community. This is an absolute power grab by the real estate industry and they are planning on doing it. Right now, there's a ton of op-eds talking about they want to get rid of... op-eds talking about they want to get rid of the city council deference. They're also talking about how the U-LR process is non-functioning and it's broken because the very few applications that don't get passed, which is about 1%, is not good enough for them. According to them, that 1% chills them from applying for applications. So this is a very serious issue that is now coming upon us. And I would behold this community board to take it a lot more serious than having a hearing that mingles two subject matters and is not focused. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, okay, we're going to see the one last comment, uh, from LaShawn. I know she had started before, so we're gonna see her last comment and then we're gonna conclude the hearing. Can you please turn over to Sean?
Yeah. Should be able to.
Okay, yes, I'm here. Hello?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. Thank you. I'm now locked away. Hopefully I can do this uninterrupted. Um, and yeah, I just, I have to agree with Alicia because I was like, what is this, liquor licenses hearing? I'm confused. Um, but yes, I wanted to speak on the U-LR, the mayor's plan. Um, you know, in this, it would eliminate the, uh, environmental review. And I guess I just want to talk a little bit about the environmental review. So I'll give a, a quick background, um, for people who may not know. So you have the, the two reviews and one, one is the environmental assessment statement and the other is the environmental impact statement. So performing the EAS, it's a quick review process where a whole list of negative, negative environmental impacts are considered and then eliminated. Um, sometimes this is all that's needed for a project because the determination could be arrived at that no further environmental review is warranted. An environmental review process has to be performed on a development project that are not classified as as of right. This means that the project would be attempting to change the existing zoning and the developer would have to disclose the potential negative environmental damages that could be caused by the change. The environmental review process is simply a disclosure process. There's nothing in the law that says a project may not go forward if it causes damage. However, any project that may cause damage normally will engage in mitigation scenarios to help reduce the negative impact. This is not required, but the city normally makes it a part of an application to appease the public. So however, the EAS may determine that there are potential negative environmental impacts and thus additional studies must be performed under an environmental impact statement. The EIS. The more negative impacts, the more expensive and time-consuming the EIS becomes. It could also deter or limit certain types of construction or place more of a burden upon the city or developers to correct or address these issues. For example, in the case of the upzoning of Empire Boulevard, the EAS would call for additional studies under the EIS because of the tremendous change that would occur. Uh-oh, um, just in, uh, water, sewage, or traffic. However, this does not mean that the study would stop the project. It just means that someone, either the city or the developers, will have to address the environmental consequences and consider performing mitigating scenarios to decrease the negative impacts. Sometimes the city or developers can come back and say, we cannot prevent the negative environmental impact, but the project must continue and it does. I am running out of time. Another example of how this works is that Cornell Realty application, which I know quite well, to upzone Franklin Avenue that lies on the border of Brooklyn Botanic Garden. In that case, MTOP presented evidence that the developer failed to look at water sewage impacts by fabricating the number of apartments that would be created. The city refused to make them perform an EIS, thus saving them time and money.
I need you to conclude your comment.
Yeah, almost done. The lower court agreed that the developers should have performed the EIS on water and sewage impacts, thus null and voided the rezoning. The U-LR process is not useless. Um, in fact, you can actually see how there are even some holes within that process. But in this moment, it gives people power, power to challenge, uh, developments that are not as of right. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we reached the end of the, um, the public hearing. Uh, I want to thank all those who've given testimony this evening with regards to the CBC, uh, report along with, um, the information that's been provided with respect to the two, um, SLA applications. Uh,
All right. I'm coming, love.
Just to recap, the, uh, report was published earlier this month. Uh, so this is something that has been discussed by our U-LR committee. Um, that report, as has been stated a number of times, it offers, uh, recommendations on the land use process. Some of those recommendations have direct impacts on the community boards, uh, the borough president and other entities in terms of providing, uh, you know, in, in terms of their roles in, in the U-LR process. So this is not meant to be exhaustive. This is meant to be an initial conversation in terms of providing some information and, uh, the initial conversation in terms of gathering sentiment, uh, with respect to this district and how, um, we are, we are looking at these changes. Uh, this is not the end. Uh, this is still going to continue. This is gonna be a conversation that we are having with our U-LR committee in terms of there's going to be additional fact-finding. We will be identifying additional steps we'll be taking in terms of outreach, information gathering. Uh, if additional hearings are required, there may be standalone town halls that are done. So all these are options that are being, uh, discussed by the board. Uh, I do want to, I do also want to conclude by thanking everyone. Uh, this is the first, um, time we've actually implemented this format. So we absolutely understand this is not as smooth as we would like it to go. But one of the things that we, we do, um, try to do is be a learning organization here at Community Board Nine. So we are going to be looking at the format, ways in which we can, uh, enhance it as well, make it run smoother so that way we can make sure we accomplish all of our goals. But again, I want to thank everyone who's provided testimony this evening. Uh, and please stay tuned, uh, because we will be, uh, doing addition, uh, having these, uh, hearings on a, uh, continuing basis on a monthly basis. And we will be doing it specifically on the CBC topic as well. Uh, at this time, we are now going to go into, uh, our general board meeting as scheduled. I am calling the meeting to order. Uh, the time is now seven thirty-seven. Madam Secretary, are you on board?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, we are now going to begin with the public session. Uh, just as a one quick, um, amendment. Originally, we were, we didn't anticipate, we're gonna be able to see the two applicants during, um, during the, um, the hearing portion. Since they were able to provide some information there, we will discuss it as a board when we get to the business session where we'll actually be able to ask the additional questions from the board level. And, um, we will conclude with a final vote, uh, based on that conversation. So we are now going to actually skip into the public, uh, commentary section. That will be, uh, thirty minutes. Uh, speakers are allowed three minutes to speak. Uh, just in advance, I would like to say that, again, we are testing new formats. So we are looking at this, we did not want to remove the opportunity for the public to provide commentary. There's three minutes. Uh, as a board, we will be looking at the entire process in terms of how we proceed with that. Uh, so at this time, Dante, do we have anyone who signed up in advance for a public commentary?
Yes, okay, let me get my list here. Okay, uh, we had Stephen Beasley, uh, from the New York Presbyterian Brooklyn Methodist Hospital. We also had Leroy Berisford from, uh, Metro Plus Health. Mia, are you aware of anyone else who signed up?
Um, I believe Martina Victoria also signed up for public comment. She may be in the attendees.
Okay. Okay.
All right, so let's do this. So, um, if we could please promote Mr. Beasley so he'll be able to speak. Uh, again, the same instructions as were provided for the hearing. If there are any attendees who wish to provide, uh, give public commentary, uh, speak during public commentary, please use the raise hand function. If you're on phone, star nine will raise your hand and will be able to identify you and add you to the speaker's list. Uh, public commentary is going to be for thirty minutes total or until we've exhausted the speaker's list. Uh, is Mr. Beasley on right now?
Yes, give me one sec. Okay.
Uh-uh, he can be over here. Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Right?
Sorry?
We can hear you.
That's correct?
Yeah.
Yes, excuse me, there may be a child that might peep through, but I'm Stefan Anthony Beasley. I work in community affairs for New York Presbyterian. We're just bringing greetings, saying hello, making sure that you all know that, um, we are doing virtual and in-person, um, ed, health education outreach and also, uh, a lot of different physician talks from neurology to podiatry, head to toe. So we are just, um, here and present in the community. And, um, as you, as many of you may know, we have a couple dozen medical group sites around the borough. And, um, just to encourage you all to go to events.nyp.org to, um, get all of the latest information about our talks and about, uh, the, about a dozen or so support groups that are still active. We're bringing more active in-person, um, but we're also, uh, still active virtually with a lot of support groups, mostly for, um, uh, for, uh, neurology, uh, for stroke and also for, um, for parents and for moms, uh, for breastfeeding information as well. So that's really all I was coming to say. Uh, specifically tomorrow, we have, um, our series with the New York City Department for the Aging, um, our lecture on, uh, fall prevention because it is Fall Prevention Week. So, um, I can leave that, I don't think I have access to the chat, but I'll email that, uh, to the, to the board contact, uh, for, uh, folks to connect with that and that's it.
Hey, thank you very much, Mr. Beasley. And for anyone who's interested in the fall prevention, um, event, please, uh, contact the district office and they'll be able to provide that information. Okay, thank you. Dante, who do we have next on the speaker's list?
Uh, Leroy Berisford, Metro Plus Health. Leroy, if you're on, please raise your hand. I don't see him.
Okay, uh, we'll move on. All right, um, who's next on the queue? I heard you say Martina Victoria before?
Yes, Martina Victoria. I'm looking, I don't see Martina online. As of right now, I don't see Martina online.
Okay, we'll skip, we'll come back. Um, who do we have for raise hands?
Okay, next raise hands, uh, Alicia Boyd. Then, after that, it's Paul Friedman.
Paul Friedman.
Okay.
Okay, Ms. Boyd?
I wanted to make an announcement that a very important court case is happening. As you guys know, the community, along with MTOP and FLAC, filed a lawsuit against Cornell Realty after the application had went through the U-LR process and had been approved with Lori Combo making the promise of a miracle deal where she got an, an additional hundred and seventeen affordable housing units that we found out was a complete lie and did not exist. Anyway, we filed the lawsuit and based upon an environmental review that had not been conducted properly by the city, the lower court, Judge Baines, null and voided the application. Now, this was a major feat for us as we were pro-say litigants and we could not afford to hire an attorney. But we did a tremendous battle for two and a half years and we were victorious. However, the city and the developers have decided to appeal that decision. And now we are going for the final hearing on this case, oral arguments in front of the second department that is happening on Monday, this Monday coming up, October the third at ten AM sharp at forty-five Monroe Place in Brooklyn. That's right behind Montague Street downtown, about a block away from Chase Bank. If you get down there, you can just ask anybody where the appellate court is. If you do want to attend, you need to make sure you come on time. The oral arguments tend to be very quick. However, it is open to the public and it might be interesting to hear um, how this final chapter in this lawsuit plays out. This is a very important case for us. Cornell Realty was going to build up to twenty-three stories, put in a tremendous amount of development along Franklin Avenue and along the Brooklyn Botanic Gardens. It was gonna have a negative effect on our waterways and sewage as well as on the garden itself. And that, and as a black community, um, a community of color, predominantly a community of color, this was a major feat for us because rarely does black communities, um, file lawsuits. And even here still, um, are we able to win them? So, um, so this is a tremendous effort and this effort was not done by one person, it was done by a community. And so we, again, are asking you to please consider coming out, supporting this and, um, and also spreading the word and letting everybody know that Monday is a really important day for this community.
The light on, that's car turned off, right?
It would, I would really be nice if you would allow people to be on mute so when I'm speaking, I, I don't get interrupted. I, I would appreciate that, Dante. Um, so please, if you can consider, uh, again, uh, coming out on Monday, October the third, ten AM, the appellate division, second department, forty-five Monroe Street, behind Montague Street downtown Brooklyn. Thank you.
Ms. Boyd? All right, Dante, who do we have?
All right, uh, Paul Friedman was next.
Okay, please promote Mr. Friedman. Is Mr. Freeman on?
He should be on. Ask him to unmute.
Hello? Am I heard?
Yeah, we can hear you, Mr. Freeman.
Okay, thank you. Uh, my name is Paul Friedman. I'm the president of the Lincoln Road Block Association. Uh, that's the block between Rogers Avenue and Bedford Avenue. Uh, in the spring, I attended five meetings, uh, between April twenty-sixth and June twenty-seventh. The question is that on our block, we would like to have alternate side of the street park marking two days a week, the way it was during the pandemic and not back to four days a week, the way it was before the pandemic and the way it's been returned now. As of the June twenty-seventh general board meeting, it was left that it would be determined by the board which committee this would go to and what the process is. So I just want to know where we stand on that now. What committee will I be dealing with? What is the process for making this request?
Okay, uh, Mr. Freeman, thank you very much for returning and, 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 um, reminding us about the issue. Uh, let me talk with the district manager. Let's see what we need to cover administratively first. Um, to see if, you know, what we need to take care of on that level. Uh, it's probably most likely going to end up going to the transportation committee, but I want to make sure we have all the information pooled up first, uh, so we can proceed and, and, you know, get everything done expeditionally.
Can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, two of the meetings that I attended were the transportation committee because it was first, I was first, when I went to the April twenty-sixth board meeting, I was referred to the transportation committee. On May fourth, they said they would look into what the process was. On June first, they told me that the transportation committee doesn't handle this, that I should go to the environmental committee. I went to that meeting on June fourteenth. They said it should be handled by the transportation committee. I went to the general board meeting on June twenty-seventh and as they say, it was left then to figure out what is the process and who I will be working with on this. So I don't know if it belongs to the transportation committee or who it belongs to.
Well, and that's part of what we're going to do, so I need to Well, and that's part of what we're going to do. So I need to speak with the DM, the district manager about that, just to understand exactly what the steps are going to be that are required. We'll see what we can be pushed, what can be pushed administratively. I have a feeling, or if there's any additional information we need to get. If there's a need to refer it back to the committee, we'll make sure we do that referral at that time. But, you know, if you give us an opportunity, hopefully in the next week or so, we should be able to get some answers for you. So that way we can, we understand how to proceed.
Okay, and who will get back to me then?
Dante, could I ask you to get Mr. Friedman's information?
I'm certain that the board office has it.
Okay, or Mr. Friedman, if it's possible, if you could email the board office, just that way we make sure it's on top of the inbox. And we'll make sure we return, no, just leave your contact information, we can return.
I certainly will do that. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Dante, who we have next?
Arna Lipkin.
Okay, please promote Ms. Lipkin.
Okay, she should, yeah, Arna should be on.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. How you doing?
Good evening.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Arna Lipkin. I see a lot of new board members here. Congratulations. We're looking forward to all your input and your hard work this coming year. So I am a community liaison for the Connect program, which is under NYC DOH and the umbrella of Integra Development Consultation Center. It's a mental health clinic in our area on East New York and Utica, which has been there quite a few years. What's special about this program is that we all know mental health, you know, for people to have issues with mental health, they go for therapy. But the DOH decided to create something a little more holistic, and that's where Connect came in. So Connect is, there are nine sites throughout the city. There are three in Brooklyn. One is US. The other one is in Williamsburg, and there's also one under Housing Works in Brownsville. Each one tailors their program a little bit different according to the feedback that they get from the community. I started out in May and went to a number of stakeholders, of which the community board is one. And we did surveys to see what are the most prevailing issues. As such, at this point, we have different services. One of our main services that I think is a great benefit to the community is community engagement. Community engagement, what we do is we have we go out to the community and we help people with benefits, all kinds of benefits, and we don't just, they don't just come to our office, we go and meet them. So it's been very successful. We've helped a lot of people so far. We've also engaged with a lot of community events, one of which was Shower in the City, which was fantastic this past summer. Was on Utica in Eastern Parkway. We had the shower bus. We had lots of city agencies, some of which, some of you are here, had participated, gave away food, free food and food to bring home, and so on and so forth. I just want to make a quick announcement, because I don't, I know there's a lot of people looking to speak tonight. We are, our next special event is a financial literacy series. We have six different sessions starting at the end of October. And we are engaging with, today we just met with Bed-Stuy Restoration Plaza. We're, we're going to have small business services, hopefully, some local organizations and a different variety of subjects such as support programs is just what we do. Budgeting on a shoestring, spending tools, understanding credit, saving fitness and entrepreneurship. So we feel like this is, you know, in addition to the mental services, helping people economically, helping people with housing, we're doing wellness, all these kinds of things is helping people with mental health. And we know today it's not, it's much more out in the open that this is an issue and we are trying to deal with it in this way. And we hope that you will, I would be sending this flyer out to the board. We still haven't put the flyer together exactly finished it. But as soon as I do, the board will get it and send to all of you who I know, you know, I have your emails. We're really looking forward, if you can share this among your stakeholders, your networks and try to empower our community. Thank you so much for having me tonight.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next, I have Jay Sored.
All right, you should be able to hear Jay.
Okay, I'm just putting it on. I'm sorry, are you able to see and hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Fred. I wanted to just bring up the, the sort of piggybacks on the previous discussion on the community having a voice and that voice being through UHLA.
I guess what I went to school.
Any, any place, anything.
Hi, can you, can you hear me clearly?
We, we can hear you. You can quick, quick, quick five seconds. I would like to please remind everyone, please keep your microphones on mute if you are not speaking. Thank you very much, Jay. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, sure. So very quickly, there is a very large land development projects that are happening in the southeast part of community district nine. Kingsborough West is a project. It's one of the vital Brooklyn that is happening. And a lot of people are under the impression that it's, it's simply New York state land. So they do a general plan and the community has no voice. What's different about this particular project, Kingsborough West, is that the community can have a voice in it. In my opinion, and I think what's correct, if they want to have a voice, what's significant about it, it's, it's nine hundred units, a very large amount, nine hundred units of housing. Of the nine hundred units, thirty-five percent are supportive housing. So you're talking about two hundred and almost eighty-five units of supportive housing. The target population is the homeless, the seriously mentally ill, drug addicts as well in that two hundred and eighty-five of new, of new units on the corner of Albany and Clarkson. That comes in addition to four different facilities that are for the same target, which is basically of the homeless, seriously mentally ill. Canba has two facilities that, more than half of them are for the homeless, the seriously mentally ill. They came about in around two thousand sixteen. Two large facilities on the west side of Albany and Clarkson. There's two homeless shelters on the east side. That's four, okay? You go a few steps down, breaking ground created another homeless shelter. That's five, a few steps down. They want to put in two hundred and eighty-five units whose target population is the homeless, seriously mentally ill. The two hundred and eighty-five divided by three is around ninety-five. That's like three more shelters. So you're going to have a tremendous amount of oversaturation and of social services. This is contrary to what this board was interested in because there was in the statement of needs in two thousand and twenty-one, the board said that it's already oversaturated with homeless shelters. The point that I want to make is that the community should have a voice. I don't want to go to the merits of should the community say yes, should they say no? But what's very different about the Kingsbrook, the, I'm sorry, the Kingsborough with the nine hundred units is that is, is right next door the three hundred and twenty units, another project that's at Kingsbrook Jewish that's going on right now. Three hundred and twenty units, they call it like Ultra Crescent or something. That's three hundred and twenty units over there, massive amount. What people don't realize is what they may have heard about in the general plan, the three hundred and twenty units, that's only phase one of two. There's going to be twice as much over there. So I, my point is, I'd like the community to get involved if they can. Here specifically how they can get involved.
This, this Sorry, I'm sorry, but, but your time has completed. So I just need you to complete your, you know, your, your thought. We need to move on.
Okay, legit, just to conclude it, last sentence, Mr. Baptiste. Because there is a right of reverter in the deed on the Kings, on, because there is a right of reverter. Is a real property interest that according to section fourteen of the New York State Urban Development Corporation Act requires that this go to the city council to get, to change the deed. And because it goes to the city council, this community board should give its opinion so that the city council could be aware of what the community thinks. And the community, the city council does not want to go against the will of the community. That's the whole point of UHLA. Is that you're not going to get a city council person who is the gatekeeper, who says, I'm going against the community's will. So I, I'd like the community to go through an, an opinion on whether or not they're in favor of Kings, Kingsborough West, which is the nine hundred units, reselling the, the land to two homeless shelters and also building two hundred and eighty-five units, because the community has a legal right to have a voice.
Thank you, Mrs. Sored. All right. Okay, next I have on the speaker's list is Liz York.
Okay. All right, Liz should be on.
Hello, thank you for, for giving me some time. I wanted to say that I am totally against this change in the UHLA procedure that is recommended. There's absolutely no good for the community from the proposed changes. I'm I'm staggered by the amount of power that the mayor wants and the, the community in so many areas in New York City, we're fighting about developers that are overstepping boundaries and already breaking laws that had been hard won. And it's, it's really important that the community maintains their ability to speak out. And furthermore, we really ought to be preventing more problems from happening, like increasing the the size of areas where there's only supposed to be five floors. Now there's twenty-three floors. The developers really have a large say in what goes on in the city. And I sincerely hope that you keep that in mind and make sure that you, you're aware that your voice is representing ours. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. York. Yeah, I see Francesca Leopold.
Well, I had this chat. I wanted to address Mr. Friedman. I don't know if he's still there. I said that he's, he's Mr. Friedman, are you still there? If he's not available, then I will speak to him. I'll sideline him. So it's okay, you can go ahead.
Can you hear me? I am here.
Oh, Mr. Friedman, yes, my name is Francesca Leopold. I'm the second vice chair on the board and the chair for health and social services. Also, I am the the president for the Lab Block Association, which runs from Rogers to Washington. And I would really like to work with you, because this is a project that I have been thinking of since after the pandemic. I was online when you brought up the topic on the opposite side parking. And so I would like to really join with you to get this going as anything as I knew it was a matter that was already discussed with the board. And, and I know that we have to speak to someone from transportation. But I would like to meet with you, sideline maybe, you know, I can come over one year blocking on, we could, because as anything, it is a a district thing. It's not something that we can see. Okay, we are just doing this for Leopards Avenue or for Lincoln Road. It has to be a district project. So I would like very much to work with you because I'm in favor of this as well.
Okay, the, I would very much like to meet with you also. The community board will have my contact information. I don't know if I can just give it to you directly now.
No, I will get it from the district manager.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, I look forward to speaking with you.
Definitely. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, thank you. Alicia Goodrich. Alicia, you still there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
Hi, everyone. Good afternoon, good evening. It's been a long time and happy to be back. I'm Alicia Goodrich. Some may know me in my prior role. I'm now the A V P of Government and Community Relations at SUNY Downstate Hospital, and I'm bringing greens from the hospital and just coming back to let you know that we're going to be doing a lot more on the ground. We just finished with a great health fair on Sunday. The community came out and we're going to be doing more things in the community and partnering with our local CBOs to make things happen. There are a lot of things going on on campus and I will be sharing that with the D M and assistant D M to share throughout the district mailings to keep you all posted, like the Brooklyn Free Clinic, free asthma screenings and things of that matter. I may be reached at seven one eight two seven zero three eight six six. I'm here to serve and I serve in government and community relations. So if there's partnership, I'm open to that as well. And I will be working with the health committee to hopefully bring some great things to CB nine, because we are split between CB nine and CB seventeen. So you don't lose me. And I look forward to seeing and working with you all. Thank you for giving me this time.
Thank you very much. All right, last speaker we have is Rabbi Akon Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Dante. I just want to briefly address, as the former chair of environmental protection, we actually extensively researched street cleaning in Crown Heights. It does fall under the purview of environmental protection. And essentially, a community board nine is divided into four zones. Department of Sanitation rates these zones every quarter. In order to request street cleaning, you're, the zone where we are requesting the cleaning has to be, have a very positive rating. And so it's not just by block. And unfortunately, community board nine for the most part does not have high ratings. So the way really to bring back once a week or twice a week, street cleaning is really to get together with your neighbors in, 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 in a zone and just clean it ourselves and make sure it's clean. And after the Department of Sanitation sees, for let's say, two reviews, they won't do it after one review. Two reviews, you make a request and ask them to bring it back. That's, that's, that's the process. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Rabbi Berman. Okay, we are now at eight oh nine PM. So that concludes the public commentary section of the agenda. I want to thank all those who provided comments for any follow-up. We'll work with the district manager, the district office team, and we'll do any follow-ups. Okay, so with that, we are now wanting to move on to the last part of public session, acknowledgements. Do we have any elected officials or representatives? Please raise your hands high so we can recognize you.
The, let's start with the representative from D S and Y, the leaf bag, who tried during the hearing, I believe that. So it is still.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Baptiste. Thank you, Mr. online. Thank you, everyone from Brooklyn Community Board Nine for having me. My name is Sed Braha. I'm a community outreach coordinator with the New York City Department of Sanitation. And I'm here to announce that we're going to be conducting a seasonal collection for leaves and yard waste on two dates that are coming up shortly. The first is Sunday, November twentieth, and the second is Sunday, December fourth. Again, those dates are Sunday, November twentieth and Sunday, December fourth. So instead of letting your leaves rot in the landfill, basically what happens is they, they create harmful greenhouse gases. They decompose, they create methane gas, which, which is a greenhouse gas that's more than twenty times more potent than carbon dioxide. Instead, we ask you to separate them so you can help the S and Y make compost. So basically by composting your leaves and yard waste, you're not only offsetting these emissions, these greenhouse gas emissions, but you're also helping to create a nutrient-rich product, compost, which can help rebuild our soils and enrich our gardens and green spaces as well as create renewable energy. So basically, just like with recycling, composting, these items allows us to create a resource out of our waste. So to participate, it's very Um, so to participate, it's very simple, you just collect your leaves in uh paper lawn and leaf bags. Or in an online rigid container, uh, both are fine, and then you just set these out at the curb after four P M. Uh, the day before collection. Um, so to repeat, the days of collection, they are Sunday, November twentieth and Sunday, December fourth. So the day before these two dates, so like Saturday, the nineteenth and Saturday, the third, you just set out um these that you've collected at the curb after four P M. Um, and the S and Y will collect them and recycle them, process them into compost and renewable energy. Uh, please note that it sometimes can take up to four days for all leaves to be collected. Um, so if you're not serviced that same day, um, we asked you be patient, um, they will be picked up. Uh, sometimes it just takes a little bit of time. And you can get um free lawn and leaf bags uh from your community board, as well as from um your council member's office, if you wish. But as I've said, if you prefer, you can also just use um a rigid container that's online. Um, and sanitation workers will service um, will service your leaves. Um, alternatively, if you happen to miss those dates for any reason, if you're out of town or you're not able to make those dates. You can drop off the leaves that you've collected at one of our community leaf drop-off sites. Um, I uh I I actually.
You can submit the information and I'll send it out to the board.
Yeah, that would be great, thank you, uh, Dante, I appreciate that, so I'll 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 follow up with information on um, community leaf drop-off sites with Dante. Um, so that is, that is the announcement that I have, thank you all so much for having me.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Alright, uh, next, Portia Edwards, Senator Myrie's office.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, how are you doing? I know you all can answer, I'm gonna assume that you're fine, I'll pray that you're doing fine. Um, I'm just getting on just to give congratulations once to all of the new members, congratulations, welcome to the board. Um, I am hoping for a very prosperous uh season this year, we got a lot of stuff done last year. And I'm very expected uh or hopeful uh on this new season. Uh, two uh quick updates from the office, um, next Saturday, uh, we will be um doing a resolution. For uh the Panamanian Day Parade, uh, which is next week, and it's a special shout-out because it's my culture, so I'm super excited. Uh, we will be there, uh, it it flows through uh CB eight and then into CB nine. And so, um, you guys, we definitely want people to come out, march with us, enjoy the culture, see, see what it's about and how exciting um it is. It is the twenty-seventh um year anniversary, and so the office will be there, uh, that is next Saturday, um, the eighth. On October twenty-seventh, we will be having a deed theft hearing at two fifty Broadway. This is super, super important, uh, we will be doing a deed theft hearing. Uh, and so if you know anyone who has gone through it, uh, please reach out to our office, we would like as many testimonies as possible. Uh, we really want to make sure that we can put a stamp and, you know, make notice that this is happening. It is something that has been robbing our communities for a very long time. Uh, and so we really want to make sure that we can get our hands on this situation and try to come to a solution. Again, the date for the deed theft hearing is going to be October twenty-seventh at two fifty Broadway. You will most likely be able to find all of the information on how to submit testimony on uh on the state website on Friday. Uh, so you guys are getting the pre-information, uh, please reach out to our office if you know anyone who would like to testify, who would like to talk about it. And please share the information as much as you possibly can. Uh, those are my updates for um this meeting, thank you guys so much for your time, if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out. I'll give you our office number, uh, it's seven one eight two eight four four seven zero zero. Our office is located at ten seventy-seven Notion Avenue and the corner of Lincoln Road. Um, if you have any questions, please feel free to stop by, for anyone who needs constituent services, please call the number to make an appointment. We are still very um um COVID-aware, uh, and so you do have to make an appointment. However, um, just give us a call and we can handle uh most any issues that are within the state jurisdiction. Um, thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you so much. Great to see you again.
Alright, next up, we have Karen from the DA's office.
Welcome, everyone, welcome new members, welcome back, Community Board nine, I bring you greetings from the DA's office. Um, we would love to partnership with anyone who has any issues, Portia, if you want somebody um from my office to come out for the deed theft. Please let me know, reach out to me.
Yes, yes, right now, I'm telling you right now.
Alright, cool, you have my number, just give me a call. Our office is having a Hispanic Heritage Month event, it's going to be on October third. At six, six P M to nine P M, it's going to be in Williamsburg Hotel, so that's in Williamsburg. If anybody wants to travel out there, please come out, we're um honoring a lot of Hispanics. So come out and enjoy, it's going to be at nine ninety-six White Avenue in Brooklyn in Williamsburg. If you have the R S B P, the phone number is seven one eight two five zero thirty-eight eighty-eight. And excuse me, I'm not on camera right now because I have a toothache, so enjoy and welcome back again, Community Board nine.
Thank you so much, Karen. Feel better.
Uh, and then last, we have uh Casey from C, uh, Councilmember Hudson's office.
Hi, good evening, everyone, thanks Dante, thanks Fred, appreciate your time, my name is Casey Addison, I service Councilmember Crystal Hudson's Chief of Staff. I just have a handful of announcements for you all, don't want to keep anyone any further, I know it's a, it's been a long evening. Um, but some exciting news, the council member passed her first bill, it was intro zero four seven eight. Which seeks to increase doula access for uh expecting mothers. We know that the United States has a maternal health crisis, especially amongst black women, especially in New York City. And we know that black women are more likely to die during childbirth and as they're having children. And so this bill seeks to extend access to doulas, and we're really excited that it was finally passed by the City Council um last month. Um, this month, we're also starting our participatory budgeting process, we have a million dollars. We want the community members to have a part and a say in how it's spent. This process starts this month of September and will go all the way until May of next year. So we really are looking for folks to volunteer and help out, we'll be collecting ideas for how this money is spent. Up until now into October, and I can send this information along to the Chair so that you all are aware of how you can be involved in this. You'll see us out in the community, um, as this process underways, we're planning on having a youth advisory council, an older adult advisory council. So we're really looking to really get some ideas around cap- capital projects that are needed in District thirty-five that we should be spending this money on. Um, a few other things, every Wednesday, our office has a housing specialist in-house. So if you know of anyone or yourself have questions around housing applications, whether it's SCREE or DREE. Um, if you're looking for help uh or assistance with filling out an affordable housing application. We have someone from CUFF that comes in every Wednesday, who's in our office from twelve to six thirty P M. You can call ahead and make an appointment, or you can walk in, that's totally fine, so we have that resource available for folks. And every Thursday, we have an attorney that comes in from CUNY Law that can also help out with any legal consultation. Whether it's about housing, whether you own your home, um, you know, if you're in um arrears or or any, anything that's legal. They can help you out with, we do ask for folks to call in ahead of time to um set up an appointment, just because these tend to be longer conversations. And again, I can send this comp, this information to Fred, who can make sure that you all have access to it. So, that's all for me tonight, really appreciate the time and hope you all have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
And I believe that David, um, David, are you a representative from elected official or uh agency? I believe so, right?
Yes, hi, good evening, everyone, I'm with the Brooklyn Board President, Antonio Reynoso. We had a great summer, we had a big concert, we had the jazz concerts outside of Borough Hall, now we're ready to get our hands dirty. So first of all, want to welcome all the board members back into the meetings, we hope this is going to be a successful year. Um, today, I'm here on behalf of my colleague Bianca Stevenson, she's going to be the primary liaison. I'm going to be the secondary, unfortunately, she couldn't make it today, but just a couple of updates. Uh, the Brooklyn Board President allocated forty-five million dollars to three Brooklyn public hospitals. To help close racial disparities among maternal mortality rates, which is something that has been mentioned, we're very happy to work with Councilmember Hudson. Um, the can, the VP also continues to provide testimony to the New York City Council on important topics such as sanitation. Maternal maternal health services, congestion pricing and more. For those that need assistance with constituent services, we are at the Grand Army Plaza Library every Thursday from ten to six P M. It is walking, everybody's welcome, uh, aside from that, we're trying to open it up uh at Borough Hall every Wednesday. We're going to update everybody on that as we find a date. But for those interested, we have a transition plan on our website, brooklyn-ua.org. If you want to know more about what we're doing, we're going to be attending these meetings to join you and be part of the conversations. So please feel free to reach out to me or to anybody at Borough Hall, our number is seven one eight eight zero two thirty-seven hundred. And we're here to work together, very happy to be here.
Thank you very much, David.
Thank you. Uh, Fred, uh, Karen from the DA's office, did you have something further?
No, I'm sorry, let me take my hand down.
Okay, alright, I've exhausted that list, Fred.
Okay, thank you very much, so with that, we have concluded the public session, we are now going to go into the business session, uh, Madam Secretary.
Present.
Thank you, would you do with the honors, please hold the roll.
One minute. Kyrie Ali. Nicholas Almanor.
Present, present, present.
Sherob Balberg. Fred Baptiste.
Present.
Naomi Baptiste. John Beckles Junior. Rabbi Yakov Berman.
Presence.
Arin Burke.
Here.
Augustine Blackwell.
Present.
See, that's Chase.
Present.
Sukishaw. So, Kyrie. Sukis absent, okay, thanks. So. Jamie Epstein. Jamie Fulton. Tessa Hackett, Vera.
Here.
Thank you, Bishop Gonzalez.
Present.
Thank you, Abina Hatchbull. Abina Hatchbull. Primo Lazana.
Present.
Mena Legutte. Mena Legutte. Francisco Leopold.
Present.
Michael Lambert, Leiberg. Mathias Lindberger.
Present.
Courtney Lozal.
Present.
Christian Lobo.
He's running late, he'll be here shortly.
Okay, thanks, Latvina Mavina. Latvine Mavina. Irwin Mazurski.
Present.
Thank you, Viva, Vivian Morgan. Vivian Morgan. Patricia Moses.
Here.
Thank you, Beverly Newsom. Yankee Pearson. Rob Pears Moon.
Here.
Thank you. Rob Pecati, sorry, Ted Pecati. Little Catty. Milford Puit. Mr. Puit. Yunella Ron Perry.
Present.
Dexter Roberts.
Mr. Perip, camera on, everything is on, I can see his face.
See him too, but that's why I was, I can see him, okay, I'll come back, I'll come back.
Okay, I'm here, I'm here, I had to get technical support.
Thank you. Dexter Roberts. Elise Robertson.
Present.
Rashid Sadiq. Here. Rashida Skite. Debut, Debut Timothy.
Present.
Leonard Watson Lord, present. Theresa Rester Doll. Is Rester Doll?
Present.
Lori Anne Wosley.
Here.
And Cheryl Wright. Okay, let me go back over those who might not have heard, only those who I have. With the exception of Sukie, who is absent. So I'm quiet, please, Kyrie Ali. Mr. Balberg. Naomi Baptiste. Naomi?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay. John.
Do you have me?
Yes, I do, thank, yeah, I wanted you to say yes, I saw you, but I wanted you to say yes. Yeah, John Bell, John Beckles Junior. Soul Cleary Creek, Soul. Jimmy Epstein. Jamie Matthew Fulton. Abina Hatchbull. Minor Legutte. Michael Leiberg. Christian, you say is running late?
Right.
Okay.
Uh, excuse me, my apologies, I was on and I got disconnected again, Kyrie Ali.
Okay, got you, Kyrie.
Thank you, thank you.
Latvina Mavina. Latvine Mavina. Vivian Morgan. Beverly Newsom. Yakov Pearson. Ted Pilkati, Ted Pilkati, Ted Pilk. Dexter Roberts.
Present.
Thank you. Rashida Skype, Sykes. Cheryl Wright. Mr. President, we have twenty-six present, one absent. And so.
How many absent?
One, only, so, only, um, Sukie. That's the only body that an absent was made for.
Okay, well, no, everybody else is absent, but she's the only one.
And the excuse?
Uh, no, not excuse, but we, she, she called and she said she wasn't able to make it.
Okay.
But we have twenty-six present.
Yeah, yes, hold on, yeah, and I'll tell you how many absent in a minute. Let me got the record right. Is it, before I, anybody did not hear the name, just in case I made any wrong pronunciations. And you said Christian was running late, Latvina is absent, Vivian is absent. And you said Christian was running late, that mine is absent, Vivian is absent. And they have Beverly News, Yankee Pearson, Ted. I'm going down the line to make sure Rashida. And Cheryl Wright. Let me come up the absence and I'll give it to you in one minute.
Okay, well, listen, you can confirm that, but more importantly, you said, uh, but the number of present was twenty six.
Presence, twenty six for sure. I was just making sure that the absence.
No problem. You can confirm that. We'll come back and confirm the absence shortly, but twenty six present, we have a quorum. Uh, okay, so we're going to go into item two in the business session. Uh, the approval of the June twenty two, uh, general board meeting minutes. Those minutes were sent out as part of the package for this meeting, um, for this meeting. Uh, at this time, were there, are there any corrections to be made to the minutes? Please use the rate hand function and let me know if you have any corrections that need to be made to the minute. Okay, hold for a second time. Are there any corrections that need to be made to the minute?
There's a hand from, yeah, from Pat Moses.
Oh, I just have a question. Um, there's twenty six members present, but I have no idea as to how many members we got, so I don't know if we have a quorum or not.
Okay, I'll tell you that, Miss Moses.
No, but I don't know how, my point is that I don't know, I don't know if we have a quorum because I don't know how many members we got.
We have, we have forty three members on the, on the, on the roster.
The most we could have is fifty, so we're good anyway.
Right. I thought that too. Yes. Miss Moses, does answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Uh, so unless there are any corrections, um, we're going to, um, so we're going to have the, uh, the minute approved by common consent unless there's any objection. Okay, hearing none. Uh, Minister, Minister standard approved. Okay, thank you. Uh, we are going to now go into item three, committee reports. The committee reports have been submitted by the committees, uh, as part of the, um, package that went out to the board members. Um, so those are for informational purposes. I don't believe there are any votes on any of those. With the exception of Public Safety, who has two, uh, liquor licenses that we'll be considering this evening. Uh, are there any chairs who wish to make any comments with respect to their committees? If so, please raise your hand. And I would remind everyone, please, uh, if it's in your report, no need to restate it. Only if you have a major announcement or something of significance that the board needs to know at this time. Okay, Miss Moses, I see your hand and anyone else? Okay, seeing no other chairs, Miss Moses, you have the floor.
I'm the only one, huh? Okay, I just wanted to say, um, good evening to everybody. And my name is Pat Moses. I'm the Chair of the Ulope Land Committee. And our first meeting was held on, um, September thirteenth. And I'm going to ask all of you to please review the minutes of September. It's very, very important. I also want to say that on September twenty second, the Borough President's Office, they held a Ulope training, it was from six to eight, and I, I attended along with some members. Today, um, the twenty eighth, from eight thirty A M. to ten A M., there was a Zoom panel meeting was held on how New York can improve its land use decision making process. So I did attend, and I would say to, to everyone that there is some materials that is attached to, that was attached to, um, your agenda.
I don't want to raise my hand.
And I think that, um, it's pretty thick, but everybody should read the material. So when people are making decisions or ideas, I think you should read first and then let's talk about it. I don't think that people should just listen to everybody else without reading. That's my opinion. That's professional opinion. Um, our next meeting will be held on October, the eleventh, at seven P M. And what I'm asking is that if you, if you are that interested, I think you should show up. At least show up at our Ulope Land meetings. It is extremely important. So when you have somebody come on and talk for one or two minutes and you haven't read anything, to me, it's not that important. So your voice should be heard. So I think that we should all get together and look at what's going on because it's a really, really serious incidents going on right now. And some of you don't even come out. So I'm just asking that if you would come out and at least let's put our heads together, let's read, come up with some answers. Because if you just come up with, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know. No, you have to come up with why we disagree, why we want something. So that's, I'm just appealing to um, the community to please come out and join in with us. And let's go over this because it's a very serious situation going on right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Okay, um, and I will be speaking a little bit to that as well when I get to my chair room report. Uh, but thank you for, for that, for that initial shot because we do need to, to, to really stick this very seriously. Okay, uh, so at this time, we've concluded with item three. We're going to go to item number four, uh, the district office report, uh, from the district manager, Dante Arnwine.
Yes, Fred, before I go, I just wanted to note that there's a attendee, um, with their hand raised. Been off and on, off and on. Uh, I don't know how you want to address that.
Unfortunately, we're in business session right now, so we're not able to entertain. We need to make sure we get to the agenda.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Dante Arnwine. I'm the district manager here at CB nine. Um, first, I just wanted to reiterate, as I do every meeting, that the district office is open. If you know of anyone, your building, on your block, in the neighborhood, who needs assistance, um, with anything city related, um, please direct them to the board office. If we have the answer, we will definitely do our best to get, if we have it, we'll obviously provide it. If we don't, we'll do our best to get them the information that they need, uh, to hopefully resolve, uh, their issue. But the district office is open. Um, also, I just wanted to encourage everyone, uh, all the board members, I believe, may already be, but any members of the public, uh, if you have not already, please sign up for our weekly e-blast. Our e-blast goes out every Friday. Our e-blast consists of information pertaining to our board, uh, meetings, uh, board business, uh, health-related, uh, information, employment, so on and so forth. And so, uh, it has a lot of valuable information from city agencies and, uh, community-based organizations throughout Brooklyn. So, uh, if you, uh, have not signed up for that, or if you know of folks who need information, uh, and they, um, have an email, have them reach out to the board office so we can get them, uh, signed up for that weekly e-blast. Um, yesterday, uh, the board office, um, uh, staffed a table, uh, at Mega Evers College, uh, at the Food Pantry. Just wanted to give that update. We were able to be out there for a couple of hours with some other, uh, community organizations and city agencies to give, uh, information to the public. So, you know, when folks reach out to, uh, when they're, uh, reach out to us, you know, if we're able to, to do events like that, small pop-ups, uh, and participate, we, we try if we have the capacity. So, uh, you got, if you hear of any events, you know, throughout the community, uh, and you know the point of contact for that event, um, please connect with the board office, uh, let us know so we can connect with them to see if we have the capacity, uh, to attend. Uh, just and also another update from over the summer, uh, we did host S Y E P interns, uh, in the board office over the summer. I just want to say thank them, uh, thank you to them, uh, for all their help during the summer. And I just wanted to encourage, if you're, uh, encourage everyone, if you're a part of a community-based organization, um, and you have the capacity to take on, uh, participants next year, I would definitely encourage, uh, your organization to, to be a work site for S Y E P. And so, uh, when that information comes out, um, as they start the application, uh, process next year, uh, we will obviously get the information, so we will, uh, disseminate that information, so just be on the lookout for that. Um, let's see, also, something that we are trying to compile, uh, in the board office is, uh, a nonprofit uh, resource guide, um, something that should be substantial, um, with a lot of information. We get a lot of folks coming into the office that need different, um, services. And so, uh, we're trying to compile, uh, we're going to, uh, compile and, you know, create a, a nonprofit resource guide. So when folks come into the office, they can get, um, all of that information. So with that, uh, be, check your emails, monitor your emails, information is going to be going out about that. So just, um, just wanted to give that notice, uh, so just check your emails. Um, next, I have moved my district service cabinet meetings, uh, from the first Tuesday of the month to the fourth Tuesday of the month. Uh, something that I realized is that when you get the information at the beginning of the month, it expires by the time you reach the general board. Uh, so, um, I was fortunate enough to have, uh, the, the cabinet meeting yesterday, um, morning. And so I just wanted to give some quick updates from that, that meeting, um. So members of the public have it. So, um, the New York City, uh, Service Line Inspection Program is doing, uh, inspections on national, for natural gas customers throughout New York State. Uh, this is mandated by law. Uh, so you may see some folks come up to your door, um, from National, uh, I can't remember the name off the top of my head, the third-party service that National Grid has contracted out to do the inspections. But I just wanted to make that, that note. Um, if you have not had this inspection, um, it is required. So if, uh, folks come to your door, uh, and you need to find out if they're credible, you can definitely reach out to the board office. I can quickly reach out to National Grid just to make sure that they're credible, but that inspection, um, is, uh, needed. Um, also, National Grid has the, uh, Energy Affordability Program. The program assists income-eligible customers with managing their, um, home energy bills. Um, if you think you may need this, or anyone, uh, that you know may need this information, I'm not going to go into great detail, but, um, have them reach out to the board office and I can give them all the information for that. Um, also, National Grid, um, has the Neighborhood Heating Fund, which is still available. Uh, it's additional assistance that is available to help you pay your bills. Um, and this is administered by the, uh, Heart Share Human Services of New York, uh, in partnership with National Grid. Uh, the grant is up, I, I believe the grant is up to two hundred dollars, uh, for customers. Uh, if you're interested in that information, I can definitely reach out to, um, the folks that I work with at National Grid to get more information on that. Um, if I have a number right here, um, if this is something of interest, the number for that would be seven one eight four two two four two zero seven, again, seven one eight four two two four two oh seven. Um, the Department of Buildings, uh, has a small business help form, um, on their website where, uh, essentially, you can get one-on-one guidance on planned or ongoing construction for your small business. Uh, this includes, uh, inspections permits, generally device, so on and so forth. Um, their small teams will handle inquiries, uh, and project, uh, applications coming in from the city small business community. So if that's something of interest, you know, you small businesses that may, may need that type of assistance, reach out to the board office. I can provide that information. Also, uh, the Department of Buildings has Buildings After Hours. Uh, this began in June, uh, this summer. Uh, the Department of Buildings, uh, will be, uh, open every Tuesday from four P M. to seven P M. Uh, for homeowners, tenants, small business owners and building managers. So if that's something that, uh, uh, is of interest, please, uh, let the board office know and I can get you more information for that. Um, as mentioned, um, in the executive committee meeting, uh, the board office, we will be working with, uh, the committee chairs and committee secretaries. If they have, um, a set secretary, or if they're doing, um, a switch, we will work with all secretaries to format the committee minutes. Uh, if the minutes are formatted, um, that allows us to get it up on the website much faster. So we will be working with the committee chairs and, uh, secretaries to make sure that, uh, information, uh, gets up to the website, uh, in a timely manner. I also just want to give, uh, just a general request to anyone who is, um, part of a block association, tenant association, merchant, neighborhood association, any community type of association, um, please reach out to the board office. You know, we want to connect with, uh, these, um, organizations, these groups. Uh, it's much easier for us to disseminate information to members of the public if we have, um, one person. So whatever block that is, we can give that person the information, they can get it to their block association. So especially if you know your block association president, um, have them reach out to the board office if they have not already. But we want to, we want to form those relationships, uh, and keep those relationships so we can disseminate information to everyone, uh, in a timely manner. Um, let's see. Uh, I made this update at the exec, but I will also make this update. Um, I believe, uh, at one of the meetings during the summer, there was, um, a question that had came up about a community board handbook. I did reach out to Borough Hall regarding if there was any updated version, uh, to that handbook and no updated version was found. So I did send out that, uh, version of handbook, I believe. Um, if anyone is interested in that, please reach back out to the board office. I, I believe that version may, is definitely over five years old, um, but Borough Hall has no record of any updated version. So listen, even for record or for your records, um, for your reference, rather, um, I can send that for, uh, to you. Um, also, we've been receiving a lot of, um, phone calls, inquiries, um, about missing trash receptacles on streets throughout the district. Um, if you are seeing this, um, it's, if you can send an email with the location, that's much easier because I can just forward that and we can keep it moving. Um, but if not, give a call to the board office, let, let one of the staffers know, um, what that location is. Uh, and I will make sure to send that, um, uh, complaint over to the, uh, D S N Y, uh, super to see if we can expedite getting those receptacles back on, uh, to those street corners. They were removed, uh, for Labor Day Juve. Uh, they are already in the process of, um, um, re, uh, replacing, uh, the bins. But still, if you don't see one on your corner and there was one there before, reach out to the board office. Just a couple of things, and this is, uh, and I'm almost finished with my report. Um, this is something that's important. This is, goes back to block associations. If you're part of, uh, any type of associations, the school, constructionist authority has sent us a, a couple of notices and we will send them out, uh, to the board. They will also be in our weekly e-blast. Um, the, uh, authority, uh, is notifying that upcoming work will be happening at K one sixty one at three thirty Crown Street. So if you live in that area, definitely reach out to the board office. We can send you, um, the flyer. Uh, so you all have that. Also, the authority notified us that there will be work, uh, at the Wingate Campus, six hundred Kingston Avenue. So if you live in that, um, vicinity, reach out to the board office. We will send you the notice that we received from the authority. Um, I believe that the contact person for, uh, the authority uh, over those projects is on the flyer. So if you have any direct questions, you can reach out directly to the authority. And then the last part of my, um, report is over the, uh, summer, the executive committee met twice. Um, per or by laws, the executive committee, uh, is required to give the district manager authorization for, uh, personnel services. As many of you know, Khalid Nixon, who had been with the community board for quite some time, um, has moved on to a different endeavor. Uh, now he is the assistant district manager at, uh, Manhattan, uh, Community Board Eleventh. So just congratulations to Khalid. Um, but over the summer, uh, we were able to, uh, post the job description, uh, interview a couple of folks, uh, for the position, and we, we finally settled on someone. And I am very fortunate enough to introduce you all, which you probably may already know him. Uh, Khalid, not Khalid, uh, Jamat. Uh, Khalid, uh, used to work at a former Assembly Member Richardson's office. He started there as an intern and worked his way up to working, uh, to be on her staff. Um, you may have seen him at community board meetings, at different events throughout, uh, the district, uh, while he was, uh, in the Assembly Member's office, but we're very fortunate enough to, to bring, uh, his expertise that he has specifically with, with Community Board Nine and his network that he brings with Community Board, uh, with the area of Community Board Nine to, uh, the board office. So I just want to introduce the board, uh, to our newest staffer, Khalid Jamat. Khalid, uh, please, uh, unmute yourself and say hello to your board.
Can everybody hear me?
We can.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Khalid Jamat. Uh, I hope everybody had a wonderful and safe summer. Um, like Dante said, uh, thank you for the warm, um, you know, regards to me. Um, I really appreciate it. I'm really, uh, excited to get started with, um, the community board. I've worked, like he said, with former Assembly Member Richardson's office, and from there, I was an intern from S Y E P. And I learned, um, community, and I had no clue, really, the voice that we could have if we all come together with, uh, uh, with local. And I had no clue really the voice that we could have if we all come together with, with local government and really try to make a change in the community. So I really see the importance in bringing youth into these type of meetings and letting them know what's going on. Rather than when they're older, you know, they don't understand how to provide services for their community. I can't wait to meet all of you. I'm excited to get the work started and we're done. If you could just reach out to me, if you have any questions that our office could help, I'll do my best to help you out. And again, I'm, I'm very excited for this opportunity and I can't wait to meet all of you. Have a good night.
Okay.
Khalid, thanks so much again and welcome to the team. We're really glad to have you. Oh, I don't know what you mean, get the work started. You've been here for a week. You got to talk to your boss about that. But okay, but that concludes the district manager's report. We will entertain a couple of questions. We'll take two questions for the district manager.
Fran's hand is raised.
All right. And if there's one more after that, we'll entertain that. Fran.
I don't have a question for the district manager. I'm not certain if you are taking any remarks from committee chairs or have that one. Or you haven't gone.
We've already passed that in the agenda, unfortunately.
Oh, I was taking a poll at the time. So when you do get a chance, can you give me a two, a two minutes, please?
Okay, after, after the chair report.
Okay.
Well, I'll tell you what, we've got, we've got two minutes, we can do two minutes. Well, give us a second, let's, let's just conclude with the district manager's report. Does anyone else have a question for the district manager? Okay, hearing none, we are.
Pat Moses. Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Ms. Moses, and we'll conclude on you, your question. Go ahead.
I'm going to make the same request that I've made on the last meetings that we had. The elected officials really need to send out representatives at least to come to our meetings. I'm not talking about the general board meetings, I'm talking about committee meetings. Because that would help us if they had a representative. And I know you sent out letters last time, but I haven't seen anyone. And I think it's really, really terrible that especially what's going on now with the ULOP committee, there's nobody there. So if you could just maybe reach out to them again, that would be really helpful. Thank you.
Yes, yes, you will see that go out tomorrow. Thank you for that.
Oh, you know, I just wanted to make one note with respect to what Dante said as well. So with respect to that, 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 that New York City Service Line Inspection Program, it's important that people comply with it because there is a thousand dollar fine if you don't. So please make sure we spread the word to our neighbors, you know, to make sure they're paying attention to it. Understand, you know, we don't want necessarily open the door for people we don't know. But this is something that is mandated and it's something that will cost somebody a thousand dollars. And we don't want somebody to have to pay that money unnecessarily. So if there are any questions, they can definitely reach out to the community board office and I'll assist in whatever way they can. But let's just make sure that everybody knows to expect that this has happened. Okay, thank you very much for your report, Dante. Fran, okay, we'll allow you a minute, a minute.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair, I'll be quick. Just as Dante said, I too was at my agency, we were sibling at Mega Everest. And they had the, the food pantry there for the seniors and a few other seniors. They came to my table asking about the, the questions concerning their rent. And it was more related to dre and scree. So if you know the body who's represented here right now, if you know of any seniors who have issues concerning their rent and they need information, please refer them to the board and the chair for the housing will definitely take care of it. Also, as you go about, I know we have quite a few new members. And if you know of any organization who have, that we can use for our seniors to get services to them, please contact the board, the board will then pass it on to me. Yesterday, I visited one of our senior centers and you're really, really scraping the bottom of the barrel to really meet the needs of the seniors in the community. As we know, I'm Karen from the D S official going to attest to that, as well, Jackie Love. During the COVID, the food distribution took a very hard hit. And so the food is very limited. And some of the shelters, they don't have the, the, the food that they need to really give out to the community. So they are really trying to meet, to meet the needs of the persons that they were serving yesterday and the lines were around the block. And I went down to the area, they were saving the food and it, it was very limited. So if you know of any organization who is able to, you know, supply any food, whatever resources, it could be dried goods, it could be vegetable, whatever it is, please reach out to the board office and the intern will reach out to me and I will contact, I will contact the senior center and so that we can help. Some other areas that I know Warren did give me a call because grew NYC usually on Fridays, they wouldn't have left with the food, food supplies. But then that particular senior center, they don't have transportation. So it's very hard to get someone to a location to pick up for them. So I'll try working with another senior center who have, do have transportation to see how we could help. But our seniors, they do need our help. So I'm just asking that the body, if you know of any organization, any way that you could help, whatever services that we can get to really accommodate our seniors and make, you know, that is a little bit smoother, please, please help. So just contact the board, you can get my number from the board and you can call me directly and we'll have a conversation. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we are going to now move on. We're going to actually alter, we're going to, yeah, the treasurer should be arriving shortly. But in the interest of time, we'll come back to him when he arrives. So we're going to go to item six on the agenda of the chair, of the chair's report. All right, first of all, I just want to welcome everyone back to the first meeting of the, the year. I'm really excited. I, I think we've come such a long way as a board, but I have to say that. With that being said, I think given some of the feedback we've received this evening, we know we have a lot of work ahead of us for the coming year. But I'm definitely excited. I think we have a lot of talented people, a lot of smart people who, who know how to develop solutions, who are advocates for this community. So I think we're going to get a lot done this, this year. So the first of the items that I wanted to discuss very quickly are the committee assignments. So for the bylaws, my, one of my responsibilities is making sure that the committees are assigned. So we were able to do that in a timely fashion. So all board members should be assigned to committees at this time. And I just wanted to make, to, 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 to say this, that we've already noticed absenteeism with respect to some of the committees. I guess we can, you know, allow some grace for this September holidays, you know, some confusion around, you know, you know, people getting on. But I just want to make sure we remind everyone that it is a requirement that you, you know, that you attend your meetings. The schedules are generally done in advance. So you should be, have all your meeting dates. If not, we can try and get those, make sure we get those to you. But please make sure you schedule around those. We do our best to try and not overburden members in terms of giving you multiple committees. So everyone is assigned to one committee and we just need to make sure that everyone does that because that is, the committees are the engine that drive this board. So please make sure that you are attending those and participating. If you have any issues and understanding that life happens, please make sure to communicate that with your committee chair as well as with the board office. So that way we can make sure that it's counted for, we understand what's going on, you know, your circumstances. Now, currently there are two chair assignments that are pending. So currently the Transportation Committee and the Economic Development Committee do not have a chair assigned. Those have been meeting with ad hoc chairs. I served as the ad hoc chair for the transportation meeting this month. Warren Burke served as the ad hoc chair for, I'm sorry, Economic Development. We are continuing work in terms of identifying someone who'll be able to serve as the chair for those committees. As soon as those assignments are made, that will be communicated with the executive committee and along with the committee members for those respective committees. We hope to get that taken care of as soon as possible. One thing I would also like to say with respect to the committees is make sure, you know, as, you know, we're, we're, we're ramping up, we need to make sure we start getting up the speed very quickly. We would like for all the committees to make sure that you're filling out the budget request forms. The budget request forms is something that was designed by the district office last year. It's a tool, one, to help organize the committee, you know, to help the committee stay organized with respect to the events. It outlines all the information that the executive committee and the board is going to need to understand what it is a committee is trying to do in terms of an event. So please make sure you're utilizing that. And just as equally important, it tells, you know, it asks the committee to put dollar figures of these as well. It's important for us in the short run, in terms of understanding how much money we need to, you know, in terms of running these events. But also in terms of planning and in terms of trying to do fundraising or any other activities, or if it's solicitations from elected officials, we want to have an idea in terms of what does it really cost for us to do some of the events that we would like to do as a, as a, as a community board. So please make sure that you're keeping that in mind as you are actually, you know, doing your deliberation. And also as a final reminder, remember all your activities and recommendations, they're voted on by the committees, must be approved by the committees. But after that, there is oversight function, those votes have to go to the executive committee. Because part of our responsibility and our job is to make sure that the questions are initially answered. We want to make sure that by the time it gets to the board, there, there shouldn't be a lot of questions with respect to that. So it, it, you know, it's an oversight function, it's a matter of making sure that we have all the information so that the board can be efficient with its time when we get to the board meetings. Okay, so next item I have is with respect to the monthly hearing format. So this month was our first go around. Part of this is participa, is precipitated by the city charter mandate. It was something that was identified as part of an audit last year where our, our public commentary section isn't sufficient in terms of saying we had a hearing. So what we were trying to do is we're trying to integrate that along with our, our meeting, our, our meeting schedule. So that way we're not asking for extra days in the month in terms of actually conducting the hearing and, you know, and other meetings to try and, you know, alleviate some of the strain in terms of the, the community and the board members. So we were able to do that today. Understandably, there are hiccups, we are going to be working on that. Absolutely, we appreciate all feedback with respect to that so that we can try and improve that process. So it, you know, it'll look a little bit different next month, it'll look a little bit different the next month after that. But we're committed to refining that process to make sure that, you know, it truly is something that we're getting meaningful testimony from the community and we're able to, to, to use that in terms of our advocacy efforts. Okay, so with respect to that, the first topic for this month was the C B C land use report. So it's been discussed, it was been mentioned a couple of times by a number of people who were there. Our ULOP chair is definitely aware of it, it's been discussed in the ULOP committee already. And again, in terms of background, it's a report that was issued by an organization called the Citizens Budget Commission. And they made some recommendations that would definitely impact the community board's role in the, in the ULOP process. So this first hearing was just an initial hearing. There is no actions that are planned at this time. We just wanted to kind of gauge sentiment, just get some ideas in terms of where our community members are with respect to that. But there will be additional activities that are going to be coordinated as part of that. So please make sure that you're just staying in tune. Please make sure, especially if you're interested in this, make sure you keep an eye on the ULOP committee when they're meeting and their agenda. There's going to be something that's going to be coming up continually. And I think it's, it's very important that we make sure we do that. The city, as a whole, the, the mayor's agenda has been, he has an initiative called, I think, a city, yes, the city or something like that. So there is definitely an initiative he's trying to push with respect to moving a lot of these processes along a lot faster than we are used to. So it's important for us to really analyze these issues now and be ready to weigh in. My understanding is that there's going to be a public engagement process that happens sometime next year in terms of this comes up as, as a discussion to be voted on in some respect, perhaps by the council or perhaps it ends up being a, a text amendment or something. But we can't wait that long to start engaging and learning about that and, and activating if we need to. So I just have to run again to just make sure they're staying, you know, keeping their eyes open with that. The question has come up with respect to in-person meetings. So the New York State Executive Order for the COVID State of Emergency had expired this month on September 12. But there were additional emergency declarations that are still in effect. The monkeypox one, there's one for polio and healthcare staffing. So those are still in effect on the state level. And on the city level, it was just recently extended, the city emergency order was extended through October 22nd, you know, October 22nd. So with that, the district office team is, we're working with them in terms of identifying, we're preparing in case we, you know, for when, you know, we, we eventually end up going back to in-person. So they're identifying places and spaces where we can go and we'll be able to engage. We're also looking at making sure that we're being able to do, you know, meet in-person safely. So, you know, as additional information comes through, we will be sharing that with the board. We anticipate at the very least for the month of October, the committee will be meeting virtually. And we'll probably, you know, as we get more information, as we get closer to the 22nd, we'll be able to make additional decisions about in-person meetings. All right. One thing I want to go to before I go to the bylaws is it was mentioned before from Councilmember Hudson's office about participatory budgeting. This is an important opportunity that I think that as a board and as a district, we definitely want to make sure we're, we're, we're taking advantage of. So for those who aren't familiar with the process, there is a million dollars for District 35 as well as for Councilmember Joseph District, where she has a million dollars in terms of a pot for participatory budgeting. Which means potentially we have access to a pot of almost $2 million in terms of we can champion ideas for capital investments in the district. So things like if we're looking for tree bed liners, you know, to, to make sure that, you know, you're keeping, you know, that, that animals away from the trees. That's something that can be put as part of that. If there's parks that need to be refurbished, if there are public, public grounds that we would like to see enhanced and, and made better, this is the opportunity. They actually have a floor of, it's a minimum of $50,000 for whatever projects you, you propose. So yes, so this is definitely an opportunity where we can try and get some urgent fixes done. You know, we can ac- actually advocate for those. So what I would ask for all the committees to do is to consider that as part of next month's agenda in terms of what capital ideas would you like to see done for your respective committees? I think if we can at least start generating those ideas, we can put them in. There will be opportunities to flesh them out more fully. But I definitely want for the committees to, to consider that so that way we can push for those, you know, in, in the, in the process as it goes forward. All right. Okay, the last item I have that I would like to discuss for this evening is with respect to a bylaw, a bylaw revision. So in terms of background, especially for newer members, for those who, who have perused the bylaws, you see that our bylaws have last, were last updated, were last amended in April of 2008, if I recall correctly. Which means it's been some time since they've been revised. Actually, that's not quite accurate. We've done some text amendments over the last couple of years, simply with respect to allowing for electronic voting and electronic meetings as part of the pandemic response. So, but aside from those, we haven't really done much in terms of changes. So what I've sent out to all the board members, our amendments that I am proposing, we consider in terms of revising the bylaws. So there are a number of them that I proposed. A couple of them are smaller text change, some of them have just tech changes where it's like we're cleaning up some of the language. One of them is for an addition of language which actually identifies or actually puts as part of our bylaws term limits, which were actually added as amendment to the city charter, so that's going to be included in our bylaws as well. And then some of the other amendments that have been proposed are with respect to us operating more smoothly. So for example, one of them is, is one, two of the amendments actually deal with the process for the removal of officers and for board members. From experience, what we've seen is that those are unnecessarily long. These are processes that often drag out the 30 to 60 days. So it really prevents the board from being able to act quickly on things or in a timely fashion. So two of those amendments actually say, okay, well, listen, the board chair is empowered to create the charges so that way we don't have to wait for actual, you know, actually call, a call meeting of the executive board. So the board chair is empowered to do those and prefer those charges. And then they will be reviewed subsequently by the executive committee and the general board. So hopefully, and you know, the time being reduced from, I think it calls for 30 days prior to about 15 days, which allows proper time for service of notice. But at the same time, the board can act on what it needs to do and actually affect these actions very quickly. There's another amendment that calls, that calls for the, oh yes, the filling of vacancies. For those who have been on the board for an amount of time, we understand that vacancies are unnecessarily difficult to fill as well. The last vacancy we had was for executive secretary. The process by itself for nominations took almost three months. But unfortunately, because of delays, we weren't even able to elect the executive secretary to fill the last vacancy, which was unnecessary. vacancy, which was unnecessary. So part of what we're looking for, for that amendment is to allow for the chair to appoint an, an officer, someone who's going to fill the unexpired term with the concurrence of the executive committee. So this is not an unchecked responsibility, but something that we can consider. And then there are a couple of other amendments very similar to that, but the idea of us working smarter, not harder, us being more efficient, us not necessarily taking meeting time to do things that can be done and we're able to proceed and carry on with the real business of the board in terms of making sure we're addressing the committee agendas and so forth. So with respect, of respect to process, so for the bylaws, we would need at least 10 days notice in terms of before we have a vote. So these are being presented at this board meeting with the intent that potentially we can actually vote on it by the October meeting. So these are with the board right now. But with respect to that as well, we are also opening the process in terms of there's going to be a Google form that is developed. So as members are able to familiarize themselves with the bylaws, if there are changes or recommendations they would like to make, we are soliciting that information from board members as well. So there'd be a Google form which will be provided to, link that will be provided to all the board members where you'll be able to identify those areas of the bylaws that you think might need to be addressed as well. So the potential process is we would open that, keep that open for about two weeks so that way it'll allow people to do that. At the end of the two weeks, we're going to be able to see in terms of what's been proposed. If there's additional information, if there are a lot of amendments that are being proposed, I think at the, by the, the next executive committee meeting, we'll be able to kind of ascertain in terms of if there's additional time where we're not going to be prepared for a vote, or if there are not a lot of conversations about the amendments, perhaps we're ready, but that'll be something that we'll be able to consider by the next executive committee meeting. All right. So I think that mostly what I have for this evening, I want to thank everyone for your patience and your attentiveness. At this time, I will take a couple of, a few questions with respect to all the items in my report. Second.
Yep, Ms. Westerdal and then Rabbi Berman. And then at Moses. If you want to call it in. Yeah, that's all of that, that's all the answers.
Okay. So we're going to end with Ms. Moses then. Okay, Ms. Westerdal.
I didn't see anything sent to me about the bylaw changes. Is that going to be sent to me soon? I, I just checked my email.
Oh, there was a That should have went out to all the board members. There was a second, actually, that should have went out to the board members Monday or Tuesday. So there was an updated list of, I think it was an updated list of all the meeting materials and it should have been included in there.
It was, it was in one of those documents, attached documents?
Correct.
It's going to be a Google Doc that we can edit on as well? Is there a link for that?
No, one of them is a PDF. One of those is a PDF. The PDF is titled, I believe, Proposed Bylaws Revision. So you'll see a PDF with that and it has, it's broken out by the sections of the bylaws and wherever changes are proposed, you'll see that as well. Also attached with that, there was a change sheet just so that way people will, you know, can kind of see how this is structured in terms of what sections of the bylaws we're looking at, what the current is, as well as what the proposed is, and I think a brief rationale was included. So that's going to roughly approximate the form we're actually going to use because it's going to help us be able to kind of look at things and say, okay, well, these are the changes that are being proposed and people have an opportunity to kind of explain why they believe that these are, are changes that are required.
It would be nice if it were a Google Doc where we could all comment and see each other's responses together so then we're not repeating ourselves. I'd like to see that.
Well, it is going to be created as a Google form. Dante, will we be able to have members have access so they can see all, what, all of the changes in there?
Likely not, no. It's just going to be easier for each board member to submit their testimony, testimony, to submit their amendment and then we export the information and then it will be provided to the executive committee. That's as simple as it gets. It's very simple.
I, I would like to see everybody's responses and work together, not separately. Thank you. And also I do not see a treasurer's report anywhere and a Christian LeBeau's here. I guess he's late, but I was looking forward to the treasurer's report. And I'd like it sent to me as well and posted to the rest of the board.
Very quickly, Ms. Westerdal, it is the last four attachments that you just referenced, the last four attachments for the respective treasurer's report and the proposed amendments. Those are the last four attachments in the preparation email for general board. Thank you.
All right. And he is here. He will be giving his treasurer's report shortly after, right after this.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Rabbi Berman.
Well, first of all, thank you, Mr. Chair, Executive Committee, Board Office, ever took part in compiling this Excel file, very thorough, very, everything's explained. The only, the only reservation I have is I question whether this is the best form or format going forward. I have some additions to the bylaws. I think some of the suggestions would make sense if they're, just to give you an example, you want to really create a, you want to create a formula to remove somebody from the board within two weeks or whatever, within the, the process, but you don't have their protection, what the obligations on the committees, on the board chair to keep records, where these records are held. Just to give you a quick example, the committee chairs, they'll put whether somebody is absent or attended a meeting, but they won't put if they're excused or not. So we really don't know based on in the past, when we attempted to remove members, we didn't have all the information. You know, other chairs allowed committee, committee chairs to vote at the executive meeting. Fred, you know, you took the position, no, because it's not in, it's not in the, in the, the, the bylaws. There, there are many, I think there are many other issues and clarifications that could be addressed and I question whether the format is going to, is going to be productive because we can make edits and suggestions, but what, what happens then it comes to a vote that we start arguing about every clause, like I'll, I'm, I'll be okay with 90% of, of your changes, but what about the other 10%? How, how do we move forward? Just that one more example, we have that if the chair, Fred Baptiste, for example, let's say he retires, he gets a promotion somewhere in, in Harvard University, right? He moves, moves to Boston. So the first vice chair, which is with, which is Warren, takes over his position without a vote, right? Well, I would make the argument, that's very nice, next year, but Warren was already elected. You can't retroactively impose on the board something that was already, when he was voted, we never took consideration that he may be chair. I would also say that a chair is such a tremendous responsibility, there has to be a vote. I don't think it's, should just be replaced. Secretary, I think you're right, a secretary, the chair should be able to appoint. We had issues in the past. So I just feel that if, if, if the, if the chair and the exec committee can maybe strategize and come up with some sort of, I, I guess, maybe make, I, I'm not sure what the solution is, maybe, maybe, maybe a bylaws committee, but some, some, some sort of productive formula that we could give inputs. And when we come to the actual board meeting, whether it's next month or the following month, we could, we'll have also, we'll have the ability to strike down parts of the amendments we don't like and, and, and support the amendments we do like. Otherwise, I think it becomes very chaotic and confusing and I don't know if we'll be able to make any changes unless it's done, done in a organized fashion. But again, I want to thank the office and the chair for the material they did provide, which I thought was clear and, and I see there was a lot of work and research went into it and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
No, thank you and I appreciate all the points you raised. And I think what I want to say is, you know, and I think that's part of the reason why we're putting this out there to begin a process and to begin getting that feedback. What I, what I, what I'm anticipating is depending on the level of changes or the responses we're getting, it could be very well something where by the time we get to the exec, we're like, you know what, we're not prepared anywhere close to a vote in October. But I think based on that, as long as we get that initial feedback, we'll kind of have an, a better idea in terms of what might be more conducive in terms of proceeding in terms of trying to, you know, come to a vote for anything. But, but it's absolutely the opportunity for us to be able to do these things. I think it starts the process. But again, thank you. Okay, Ms. Moses? And then, okay, then Linda, I'll see you, which will be the last one.
Oh, yes. I was going to agree with some of the things that Rabbi Berman said. And this is, this is, this is just suggesting, we do have an executive, we have an executive committee and to me, in, in each of you, each of your mid-minute, I mean, your meetings, y'all can review each one of them because if everybody's sending in whatever they're sending in, to me, y'all should be the sub-committing because you can't just take somebody's view out of the sky. It, 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 it's with laws and everything else that go together. So it's not like you can just say, well, I just want this. It's not like that. You have, it's a referral book that we all have to go to and we all have to make sure everything is in place. And, and there's some things that are going to stay in place and there's some things that's going to be moved. So my recommendations is that the executive committee become the subcommittee and, and in your meetings, take two or three of them and just work it out, you know, and just have everybody look at what people sent in and look at what you can and can't do. And, and we can move on from there. I don't think it should be like, let's just get some people that just want a committee because they just want it. It's not that easy. So that's my recommendation. If you've got an executive, executive committee, they should be looking at everything because they're like policy people and that's what they really should be doing and that's my recommendation. My second one is with attendance and this is where I agree with the rabbi. I think that as executive, if you have an executive, executive committee, they should be looking at the whole process. They should be looking at, okay, so now, should we assign this to this particular person to keep up with the attendance? For instance, Dante's group. To me, they should be checking off when we send our stuff off, have a little list and who's acting, who's not. So that when we get ready to vote them out, where some of them should be voted out, it could be done and it's a record, there's a record kept. And that's all I'm saying, that you gotta just put things in writing so there's a record kept and it's real easy to me when you do stuff aboard. So in other words, tonight, I don't care if somebody's coming late, they ain't here, so they're absent. So if somebody was supposed to come and they want to be excused, and this is where I'm talking to the secretary, somebody should say, and to you, chair, they're excused. But, but when you say you go show up late, now, when you go show up at 10 o'clock, I'm, I'll be in my bed. So my point is that they're absent. That's how I feel. So I think it's fair if you have a policy and procedure and everybody follows it and that's a fair, you can't be like, say, okay, you go show up, I'm your friend. No, you're out. Boom. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Moses, thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay. I see one last question for Linda, for Linda Watson Lord, we'll conclude on her.
Um, my, my, I share Ms. Westerdal's concern also. I think, I did read everything that, for the new, are being submitted by laws and I too was wondering if everybody just sent in and there is just like one or two people just looking at them, there might be something fall through the crap, which might cause confusion. And I think that's what, what Mr. Berman was talking about. I think we should actually be able that we should see everybody's submission side by side. I do agree that a Google Doc would be the best process for it. Yes, the Google forms would be, but something could fall through the crap in a Google form and we might be up for a lot of discussion, which if we do it, we do Google Docs where everybody can see who's saying what, what's saying what, then we would put them together if they're in the same, in the same, under the same heading. And if I see that somebody submitted what I wanted to say before, I could just agree or don't, but I think that it could be more than just the Google form. That was my initial thing. Now, now, Ms. Moses is now, I do agree with her too that it could, that the executive committee could be sort of like a review committee for the bylaws. So we could put all of those together and come up with a good prospect where everybody would be happy.
No, I mean, point noted. I mean, I think just with respect to, here's the one thing, I didn't want to necessarily put it in any one, two or three people's hands to say it, you know, but here's the thing, I think from a technical standpoint, it's going to be very difficult to say that everybody gets to see it in real time. We explored things like, okay, getting a Word document and doing track changes. That was one of the first iterations. That got very hairy very quickly when you have three or four people editing the same document. You'll have red lines everywhere, comments everywhere and it becomes really distracting and hard to kind of look at. So, you know, it was something that we definitely wanted to do, that was going to be more collaborative, but it's just very difficult and probably makes it more, you know, harder than we would want it to make. At least from the standpoint of if everyone has an opportunity to put it in, it's okay. If we have it twice, we only, we don't, we'll have an opportunity to look at it and say, okay, great minds are thinking alike, we see the same thing two or three times. That's okay. And that'll come out in the wash where we'll be able to say, okay, well, three of these are the same, these can be combined or we'll see what versions are and we'll be able to present that as a package and the board can make whatever decisions they're going to make. But, but ultimately, what, what, but I don't want to go too far ahead. What I want, you know, I think what this is really is the first stab. This is to give ideas in terms of things we can look at. I think, you know, and again, I think that there are 43 people on the board, you know, who may have other ideas as well in terms of what the real issues are that we would need to address in the document. And this gives everyone that opportunity to do that. And, and the actual evaluation piece, that'll come and it'll, that'll be organic, it'll be something we'll get an initial crack at, at, by the executive meeting. And I think by the exec, we'll have a better picture in terms of what we're really looking at in terms of how we change this and we'll be able to talk a little bit more about a process, what levels it's more appropriate and how we go forward. But to the point about, I think even with the Google form, I think at least with the Google form, there's a higher level of confidence where if you put it on the form, it's going to be in the form. It's not going to get lost, it's not an email, it's not anything else or whatever else. You put it in the Google form, it'll appear in the Google form. And that's something we can easily export and get out to everyone. Okay? But, um.
Mr. President, and if we do this at the October meeting, how much time are you allotted for us to review this bylaw in the meeting?
That, that's the thing, I don't want to say right now because honestly, I'm not sure how much we would need to. So depending on what, how many questions we have, yeah, I mean, that's the thing, I think we'll, we'll be able to discuss that a little bit and kind of see what, what the needs are. So that'll be something we can discuss by the exec.
Thank you.
Now, thank you for your question. Okay. All right. So with that, that concludes, that concludes my chair's report. There are no action items on this other than to say preliminarily, we're providing notice that we may have a vote on amendments by the October meeting. That'll be confirmed by the executive committee at the October executive committee. Okay. We are now going to move back in the agenda. I believe I saw Chris, is Chris on?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me, Mr. Chair?
Yes, we can hear you, sir. All right. So the board is prepared for your treasurer's report.
Sure, thank you. And apologies for, for running late. As I mentioned to the board in advance, I had two events this evening, so I wanted to make sure to be here. Figured it'd be better to show up late than not show up at all. Now, in terms of the treasurer's report, really three things I'd like to focus on. The first thing is friends of, I just want to update the group. So I went with Fred and Warren over the summer, we reopened our bank account. We have $50 in the bank account. That's just money that we put in ourselves personally. The next step to get the friends of up and running is to get our grants gateway activated so we can receive funds from elected officials and other groups as well as actors of fiduciaries. First things first though, we need to get that up and running and that's going to take some time. So I'm hoping to get that up and running by the end of this year. You can see an accounting of what our friends of budget is in the attached document that the district office sent out prior to this meeting. So I refer, refer you to that document. In terms of the CB9 budget, I'd like to start by giving, the second thing is the CB9 budget. So I just want to provide some context on the budget. The mayor has asked all city agencies, which affects us as well, to cut their budgets by 3% this year and by four, roughly 4.75% next year. Now, this is not finalized, this is not official, but this is, this gives us an idea of what he's thinking. So So we have to start thinking about areas where we might be able to save money, so that we can be in alignment with the mayor's directive. And I know Dante's been looking at that closely, thinking about it, but I want to say that, put that context up uh, for everyone's awareness, because when you see the budget document that the district office sent out earlier, just know that, uh, while we have some money that's been budgeted, we have some money that's already been spent, and we have some money still in reserve, we're still thinking strategically about how can we make sure that we are, uh, above board, if in fact, we do have to cut our budget by three percent. So, a few top lines from that. Uh, we still, we, we still have a hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in the budget for fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, as regards to personnel services. That's mostly salaries. Uh, we also have about eleven thousand dollars, um, in the budget for, um, OTPS, which is, other than personnel services, you can think of that as office supplies. And then we have, uh, approximately, uh, fifteen thousand dollars, um, for our budget towards rent. We haven't, we, well, sorry, we have a hundred and eleven thousand dollars in our budget towards rent. The rent, though, is paid by the city. Uh, we've already obligated some of the money in our budget towards that rent, but that, that rent is, is paid for, uh, essentially by the city. So there are more details in the monthly budget summary report, which was sent to you all prior to this meeting, as part of the, the list of attachments. If you have more questions, feel free to reach out to me. I'm happy to, uh, answer questions either electronically or in some other way, shape, or form offline. Uh, the last thing I would just say is that, when I ran last year for treasurer, I talked about doing a workshop on budget literacy, so that we can all improve our own financial literacy and understanding of how's community boards get their budgets. So, I talked about this more with Dante, and we are planning to do this in October, uh, with a nonprofit or a city agency. The plan is October, I would say for sure by Thanksgiving, but we're planning for October, it will be a sixty-minute session. You all will be invited so that you can go more in-depth into your own edification and understanding about how community boards are funded, where that funding comes from, when we get it, how it's used, uh, et cetera, et cetera. So please stay tuned for that. I did just want to give an update, as that's the first, this is the first meeting, uh, that we've had as a general board since I was elected, and that was something that I talked about, uh, when I ran for election. Uh, so I'll stop there, and, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, thank you very much. Um, yeah, we can take a couple of questions, very quickly. Couple of quick questions for the treasurer. Okay, hearing none. Uh, Chris, thank you very much for that, and we're looking forward to, you know, the additional work on, you know, with respect to the bus fundraising and the treasure. Okay, we are now going on to item seven, voting items. Uh, we have two items, uh, that the board will vote on this evening. If I could ask the, um, public safety chair to please present the two items that we were voting on this evening?
All right, hi, everybody. Um, thanks for your patience and thanks for the conversation. I will try to be both succinct and thorough in my presentation of our two applicants. Uh, if you want to follow along with me, which I would recommend, and you're interested in reading the actual applications yourself, you can find them in the attachments to the, uh, email that went out, uh, titled Reminder Notice from, uh, September twenty-sixth at four oh four P M. Um, SLA applicant number one is Blue Nick Inc., uh, which is located down on Nostron Avenue. We heard a little bit from the, uh, owner of the restaurant at the opening of the meeting, who spoke a little bit about his plans for the restaurant, um, slash bar, they had applied during, um, for the first time during that kind of like first wave of COVID, and had to, uh, reapply at this time. If you take a look through, um, there are a number of seats, both indoor and outdoor. If you look at page five, it also shows you the hours of operation there. Um, both applicants came to our committee meeting, for which we had a quorum. Uh, we asked them questions. I think that, uh, Celeste had raised the question before, um, you know, what does the restaurant offer to the community? And, um, I think that when we consider SLA applicants, we consider, will this also be of disruption to the community? Uh, when we think about granting liquor licenses or suggesting to the, um, state liquor authority that we should grant liquor licenses. Uh, you'll see that the hours there are five P M, five P M to twelve A M, uh, or midnight every single day. Um, music is, is meant to be played indoors only, um, just so that you know. And, uh, they are applying for a full liquor license. One other thing that was raised here is that, uh, do they have a certificate of occupancy, um, for a restaurant? I think one notable change in the state liquor authority, um, rules this year is that the state liquor authority won't grant a liquor license unless the, um, the restaurant has, or the, the applicant has, um, met all of the considerations necessary to open a restaurant. So, uh, this applicant had met kind of all of the needs, came themselves to the committee meeting, spoke about their plans, the restaurant, along with a representative. Uh, they have attached significant, you know, photos of the space themselves, along with a floor plan and, uh, their menu for the restaurant. And so after kind of interviewing the applicant, we saw no flaws in the application. Uh, we believe that this will be a good addition to the community, and we voted unanimously in support of this license to be offered to the restaurant. Um, Mr. Chair, I'll defer to you as to whether we should pause for questions, or whether we should keep it moving and present, um, the second applicant.
Oh, let's pause, and let's take questions on this application right now, and then we'll move to the second one.
Sure.
All right, if there are any questions for the, uh, the chair of public safety, with respect to the first application, please use the raise hand function.
I see, uh, yeah, Milford Pruitt.
Yeah, uh, I was curious, uh, the licensing to run a food service establishment, that's clearly identified in the application, correct? I mean, it's usually the chef and a designate, uh, that they must have a help, a food handler's license, that, that, that's, that's two element, that's, that, I guess, I guess that's taken care of, correct?
Yeah, so they're not applying to us for, like, the opportunity to, like, run the, the food of the restaurant. They're just applying to us for the, for the liquor license. The state liquor authority will make sure that, uh, they have, um, all of the correct licensing with regard to food and actually opening a business.
I see, all right, okay, all right.
Thank you for the question.
All right, are there any other questions with respect to this application?
Mr. Chair, just one question, unless I miss it. Which one are we talking about? I'm here for the second, but not the name, I want a name.
Yeah, we're talking about number one, which operates under the, uh, under the name of Blue Nook Inc.
Thank you.
Uh, okay, Primo, so go ahead, um, please present the second application.
Absolutely. Okay, so our second application is for, uh, La Cucusa, which, um, is better known in the community as Joe and Sal's Pizzeria, which is located at eight forty-two Franklin Avenue. Some of you may be familiar with the restaurant, it's been in the, uh, neighborhood for the past six years. Um, and similarly, we had, uh, one of the owners, as well as a representative, come to our committee meeting. Uh, that was Sal, I believe, who, or Joe, uh, who attended our, our meeting. Uh, then we had a, we have a representative here as well from La Cucusa. Um, and so they are applying for what is a partial license, if we will. Uh, it is only for beer and wine, it is not a full liquor license application. Uh, as explained to us in the meeting, they are applying because they've been in the community for six years, and they've been facing some requests from stakeholders, customers, um, to add some beer and wine to the menu. They've obviously, uh, have a full menu, they don't only serve pizza, but they also serve, you know, lots of Italian dishes. Um, either owner can really basically be seen at the restaurant at, at any time, uh, throughout the course of the week. They're close to my house, so I'm familiar with them. Uh, if you look again on page five, the hours of operations that they are applying for are mixed, but no later than eleven P M, which is Friday and Saturday, uh, as discussed in the previous conversation. In the meeting today, they are not intending on having any sidewalk space added, that's not a part of their application. They have some internal plans for renovation. Um, there is no kind of like real music, there, there's a, you know, an iPod maybe connected to a speaker system here, but it's never loud, um, on the street. This is going to be their first liquor license application. We would say that, uh, one item that, you know, we had to do our due diligence around was with regard to the fact that this does exist within five hundred feet of a church. There's in fact, a, a, a church that is just next door. And so when this application was brought to the committee, what we asked, uh, and what we suggested was that they get a letter of, um, support from the church next door for this application. And so, uh, there were two items that we said, uh, we'd be happy to, um, support this, this license for beer and wine, if they did. One was that the initial application was missing signatures from the community. And then the second piece was that we requested a letter of support from the church that is next door. Both of those items were supplied to us, um, last week, and so you can see the list of signatures on pages nine and ten. And then you can also see a letter of support from the Transformation Center of New York, which is located at eight thirty-six Franklin Avenue, just next door, um, from the church. And so with these items attached, uh, as requested by the committee, um, we vote in unanimous support for this license to be provided as well. And so, again, we'll pause and take any questions that the community board may have.
Okay, uh, so at this time, uh, the chair will accept questions, uh, with respect to the second application for La Cucusa.
You see a hand up.
Again?
I see a hand up from Celeste.
So-
Yes, are there any other, oh, the, we'll, we'll just get, are there any, anybody else have a question as well? One, going twice, uh, there we go, Blackwell, anyone else? Going once, going twice, okay, and we're going to close on Ms. Blackwell. I repeat, we are going to close on Ms. Blackwell. Ms. Chase, go ahead, you have a four.
Um, Chair, thank you. So I just have a, a quick question regarding, um, the number of seats. So I see that it's eight tables, eighteen seats. Um, and I'm just wondering, because I, I, I actually do go to the pizzeria quite often, and I'm just wondering where are these seats going to be, because it's a really small space, and it's not really enough room for stool. It's about minimal room for stools, I shouldn't say not enough, but minimal room for stools. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand, um, what is the plan for a space that's so small? And whether or not, um, even having eighteen people in there at one time, eighteen customers sitting and eating, as well as people, um, coming in and out for pizza would meet, um, kind of occupancy requirements. And, and just, I mean, the other restaurant has really detailed information, and this is lacking in that regard, especially if you look at the current, um, uh, layout of the restaurant, and, and just kind of, it, it's hard to vision that this would even be possible in a, in a space so small.
I can answer that. Um, I'm Sal, I'm one of the owners of the pizzeria, uh, pleasure to meet everybody. Um, so basically, what's gonna happen is we're gonna be reducing the menu, we're gonna be, because behind that wall that you see is a small kitchen. Uh, we're gonna be moving that kitchen and prep area into the basement. Um, so the landlord has given us a lot of space in the basement, which is very underutilized by the landlord. So we're gonna be doing some prep down there, and, which is gonna give us the ability to make our dining room a little bigger. So the answer to your question, where the additional seats will be, will pretty much gonna be in the existing kitchen area, but the wall's gonna be taken down, there's gonna be a restroom for the customers to use. Um, so that's where the, the additional seating will be.
And, and can I ask just how does this, how does this, um, post, um, license benefit the community in your opinion?
How does it benefit the community? Um, I mean, a lot of the customers, while they eat a quick slice, always, not always, but often ask, you know, if you guys serving beer, or do you guys do wine? Again, not alcohol, we don't want to do hot alcohol, but, um, and after kind of contemplating it, we did, we have our second location at Fort Greene, and we just got the license there, and it's been working pretty well. Similar style pizzeria, actually, pretty much identical layout. So, um, after we seen the positive feedback from there, we said, let's give it a shot on Franklin, so. Looking forward to serving a nice cold beer, or a prosecco wine, uh, along with a nice slice or a pizza, or a pasta dish or sandwich that we serve.
Thank you, Sal. We'll pass it along to, uh, Augustine Blackwell.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. My question is more in tune to the five hundred feet. If this has always been precedent and is currently, uh, the law or regulation, as I know it for the last ten years, how can a letter from the church and any other organization change that? That we say, uh, an alcoholic beverage should be sold next door to the church?
Yeah, good question. So, um, the five hundred foot rule is a bit of a misnomer. Um, it is not a rule, there are three institutions within five hundred feet of that particular church that have liquor licenses. It is, um, almost more of a suggestion, uh, to local community boards to consider than it is, uh, uh, something that says you cannot be granted a liquor license within five hundred feet of a church. Um, there are rules around the number of institutions that can be, that can, uh, exist with a liquor license around a church. Um, but this is not in violation of any of those rules.
Hmm, very interesting.
Yeah, yeah.
It's okay, y'all already know my standards, always know, so. Ten years, I, I, anybody on this board know me, I've been sitting here, I always say no at the vote, so. But it, I just struck me strange that all of a sudden, that five hundred feet is no longer relevant, it-
It's certainly not irrelevant, um, and it's a good question, and it's one that was also new to me. So I had to read through the five hundred foot rule, and I had to look at the number of liquor licenses that were granted within five hundred feet of that location. And for folks who are familiar with that particular intersection, um, on Franklin Avenue, there are two bars, one block north. Um, and there is also, uh, there are also several institutions that sell beer, um, on that same block. Um, yeah.
Okay, so we're in Rome, that's the room.
I mean, we're in Rome, so let's, uh, let's, let's, let's be aware of, you know, the fact, I think, you know, the getting a letter of support is, is a good indication of, you know, what it means to the religious institutions nearby, and the relationship between, um, the restaurants that are applying for liquor licenses and, and the, uh, the religious institutions themselves. And so we thought that that would be a helpful step, not one that I've seen taken, um, by this community board before, but one that we felt would be helpful. And so, um, we hope that that is a nod to the, the importance of the five hundred foot rule to community members like yourself. And, uh, we intend to continue to, uh, move in that vein as well.
Okay, change is a part of life, I hear you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Blackwell.
Okay, thank you very much for that.
I do see, I know you said last, last, and we will end, but, uh, the honorable Francesca Leopold has her hand raised as well.
Uh, thank you, thank you so much, um, Primo, I just want to ask, the nature of the church, is it like a, a full building, or is it a, a storefront church?
So I, I walk by it all the time, I would describe it as a full building, it really only seems to be active on Sunday afternoons. Um, you know, I've been two blocks away for the last ten or eleven years, and, um, I've only seen activity on Sundays, but from what I can see, it is, um, they do own the building. It's like a, it's like a two-story building on Franklin Avenue.
Okay, I just ask a question, because I know there were exemption on whether, uh, um, because this was a question previously, some past meetings, that was raised with the, uh, the church, the structure of the church. If this is a full-blown church, or just a storefront, and there is, there is the, the different elements covering forty-five, um, the five hundred foot, so that's why, yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Um, okay, so, and just for, for clarity. So the recommendation of the, the committee was to approve on both applications, correct?
Yes, I will say, just to be a hundred percent clear, the recommendation for Blue Nick was to, uh, you, it was with that we unanimously voted in support. You was with that we unanimously voted in support. Uh, we also unanimously voted in support of La Cucusa. Granted that they supplied us with a list of signatures from the community and a letter of support from the church, which they did before this board meeting.
Okay, all right.
Yes, on both.
So, okay, so at this time, we are going to vote on the matters. Uh, let me ask this. Is there any objection to us combining, uh, doing a combined resolution to approve both of these applications? Is there any objection to that?
Not from me.
No.
I object. I think they should be done separately.
Okay. We have an objection then. Uh, okay, so let's, uh, continue. Actually, first things first, uh, Madam Secretary. For the record, please note Christian Lubow is present.
Yes.
Uh, if you haven't done so already, as well as Yakov Pearson, he is here as well.
Hold on, hold on.
Yes, I'm present. Yes, Yakov Pearson.
Hold a minute, eight one minute. Got you, Miss.
Mr. Chair, I I have a question because one person, um, when you heard one objection and you just went, okay. So what's the?
You have to put it to a vote.
Yeah, but there's only one person, so. At the end of the day, we could, we could, it's more than two people. We can vote. We don't have to like do separately.
Exactly. Yeah, just one person said okay, and then you you went to that.
What, one objection doesn't.
Okay, 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 okay.
An objection doesn't rule at this time.
Okay, all right, all right. Order of the day, order of the day. One is taken. All right, I will entertain a motion to combine the resolutions into one, uh, to combine out, to combine it to one resolution. To approve. Do I have it moved? Do you move?
Yes, I I moved that the, uh, resolution be combined and to to, uh, the the one. The resolution to be combined into two approvals.
I'm Mike.
Right, the two approvals are combined into one resolution.
Right.
Okay, I have it moved by member, uh, Milford Pruitt. Do I have a second?
Second, that's a hack at Vera, board member.
All right, I have a second by Tessa Hackett Vera. Are there any questions? Okay, hearing none. All those members in favor of, uh, combining the two approvals into one. Resolution to approve, uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those members in opposition, please state your name for the record.
Teresa Westerdahl, nay.
Uh, Celeste Chase.
Name is Westerdahl, Ms. Chase. Well, you noted his nose. Are there any, anyone else in opposition? Please state your name for the record. Okay, hearing none. Any abstentions? Please state your name for the record. Call again. Any abstentions? Please state your name for the record. Okay, hearing none, um. Motion passes. Uh, so we have one resolution, uh, to approve. All right, so. Now we will vote on the actual resolution. So we have one, um. We have a motion on the floor, a resolution on the floor to approve the two, uh, the applications for. Blue Nook Incorporated at eleven fifty Nostron Avenue. And for La Cucusa LLC, doing business as Joe and Sal's Pizzeria at eight forty-two Franklin Avenue. Both of them are for new wine, beer and cider licenses. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none, we're going to call for the vote. Uh, all those in favor of. All those in favor to approve, please say aye.
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 All right. All those in opposition, please sit, state your name for the record.
Uh, Celeste Chase. Sorry.
Yeah, I heard Celeste Chase. I heard Augustine Blackwell. Is there anyone else in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Are there any abstentions? Please state your name for the record. Call a second time. Are there any abstentions? Please state your name for the record. Okay, hearing no abstentions. I heard two nos, uh, the motion carries. Um, so the motion to approve, uh, for both of them are approved by this board, and we will send a letter of support to, um. The state liquor license of the, uh, state liquor authority. Uh. Okay, uh, we are now at. Unfinished business. We have no unfinished business. There's nothing that's been tabled. All right, new business. There is any new business for the board to con, uh, to consider? Call for a second time. Any new business? Okay, hearing none. Uh, I want to thank everyone, uh, for very, very, um. Enthusiatic, well, I don't want to say enthusiastic. I want to thank everyone for their attentiveness during this entire meeting. This is our first meeting of the year. Uh, I just want everyone to keep that same energy, keep coming, uh, make sure you're attending your committee meetings. Um, the one, uh, thing we did notice is that we had a significant amount of absences. We will be working, I will be working with the district office team to make sure that we reach out to those members. Um, please, uh, there's a note. Oct, um, typically we meet on the fourth Tuesdays of the month. This year is going to be, uh, it's going to be a little bit hectic, or it's going to be a little bit off. Uh, we've already had to move, um, this meeting in observance of religious holidays. Next month's meeting is going to be on a Monday, not that fourth Tuesday. It's the Monday, I believe it's the twenty-third. Twenty-third or the forty, twenty-fourth, but it's the Monday, not the Tuesday.
Twenty-fifth, I believe.
Twenty-fifth, thank you very much.
But, uh, but yeah. October twenty-fourth, that's correct, twenty-fourth.
So the twenty-fourth, next month is going to be on Monday, the twenty-fourth. Please make sure you include that on your calendars. November and December are also going to be very funny months because of the holidays. So please be aware, make sure you're checking the calendar. We will make sure we send reminders for the next few months at least. Please, uh, make sure that you keep those noted and make every, uh, effort to attend. Uh, and again, the committees, it's critical that we have attendance at the committee meetings. We have a lot of work that needs to be done. Uh, but let me close on this note. Thank you so very much for your service. Uh, appreciate everyone. I appreciate all the testimonies that have been provided, um, and look forward to seeing you again next month. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So much.
Moved by Nicholas Almanor. Do I have a second?
Second by Blackwell.
Second by Blackwell, all right. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right.
Very much. We stand adjourned. Madam Secretary, the time is now nine fifty-eight P M.
Everyone have a good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Long meeting. Gotta find a way to trim it down.
Thank you. Well, be safe.